Good morning. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is November 17, and it is 11:09 a.m. This meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I'll ask our clerk if she would please call the roll and establish quorum.
Good morning. Supervisors Desmond, Kennedy, Natoli, Serna, Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, November 21 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14.
Thank you, and I'd like to invite everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I want to welcome everyone back after a long 14-hour meeting yesterday and some very healthy discussion around our districts and how we will be dividing them up for the next 10 years. I'm also remembering that this, I believe, is going to be the last meeting before Thanksgiving. And so unless we have to have a special meeting in the coming week, we all want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a happy Thanksgiving wherever you may be. And I'm going to jump right in because I know we have a lot of work to do today, and so I'll go ahead and read my meeting announcement. The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, or in writing. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance. The county requires a face mask or face shield while inside the county's administration building, which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in the order of in-person comments and then comments by phone. If you're making a public comment in person, a face mask or face shield is required and social distancing is recommended while inside the chambers or hearing rooms 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside the chambers and overflow seating is available in the hearing rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait for your turn to make your public comment. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not on the posted agenda. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium inside the chambers and wait for your turn to make a comment. If you're making a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call and be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is greatly appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making a public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures and avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email or at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments or you may send written comments by email to theboardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures. And at this time, we'll move forward to our timed matters.
Item number one is to authorize the Department of Waste Management and Recycling to increase tipping fees at Kiefer Landfill and North Area Recovery Station and proceed with all necessary actions to comply with Proposition 218, requirements for adoption of the proposed solid waste residential rate increases.
Chair Frost, members of the Board of Supervisors, Doug Sloan, Director for Department of Waste Management and Recycling. I'm here today to talk about our rate process with two recommendations. One is to, where staff is recommending a 3% increase on the weighed loads at the tipping fee, sorry, at the facilities, landfill and transfer station. And then our second recommendation is to start the Prop 218 process to raise residential rates. Going back with some time, we started this process March 10 of 2020, and with a hearing before the board, we were interrupted by COVID. We came back to the board in September, and the board did adopt a two-tiered rate increase, eventually $5. Last, second $5 would be January 1 of this coming year. And our request originally was 1341 a month. And so the two $5 increases, one in July and one in this January, would bring us up to $10, still short of what we needed for the department, which is why we're back. Why are the rates needed? To provide sufficient revenues. One of the big issues for us is SB 1383 going forward. The board previously has approved our lease financing for vehicles for the first three years of our program. We have another 20 trucks tied to SB 1383 that we need to order. We also have the Commercial Organics Building at NARS, a $25 million building that we need to build. Currently, we don't have the funding for that, but we would be financing those, and that is reflected in the rate schedule. Fund balance is a critical thing for us. It's a balance between, from a pure accounting standpoint of having close to $100, sorry, $100 million in reserves, which we clearly don't need, but making sure we have enough operating reserves to cover for the financing so that the financing companies are confident that we can pay back the loans and continue business. And so this rate structure is a balance for the fund balances as well as ensuring that we're going to be compliant with 1383 in next year. Again, the recommended action is adopting the resolution to increase the weighed tipping fees. Not, we're not proposing to increase the flat fee loads, pickups, cars, et cetera. We are anticipating over the length of the five-year proposed rate increase schedules that we put together, we're not anticipating raising the weighed loads. And if you look, we'll show you a schedule later that show our weighed load, even though we raised it significantly last year, the weighed load actually is, we're still now close to cheapest in the area. I think there's one landfill in San Joaquin County that's cheaper than us. We also are asking for the permission to start the Prop 218 process on the residential rates. So that's just kind of an overview of how we got here. I want to introduce again Rick Simonson from Hilton-Farncoff in Hilton. Rick was here before and did the presentation on the rate process and how they helped us as our consultant generate what the rate request would be.
Good morning, Rick. Excuse me, before you begin, Supervisor Natoli had a comment.
Yeah, not so much for Doug. I know Rick's going to cover some of this, but I want to just be clear, if I've read the report correctly, what we're proposing in the 218 process, from where we were a year ago, January, is, or actually January this year, is about an 80% residential rate increase over five years. Is that right?
Can you repeat that figure?
About an 80% rate increase. I know 70, it's about 80% rate increase.
That's right.
Over a five-year period.
That's right.
And when you were last here, your firm insisted with this, you know, there was quite a bit of interaction with the board, concern about where we were, and we settled on a $10 rate increase that was effective over the course of a little less than a year. Is, you probably do this in other jurisdictions, is it out of the ordinary to have a jurisdiction looking at an 80% increase over five years? When, in your work, do you, is that rare? You're going to be bringing a recommendation, your analysis that residential rates ought to, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, Rick.
Yeah, that's a great question. You're a unique jurisdiction in that you do have your landfill and your transfer station, NARS, as part of your enterprise. So over time, the collection rates haven't needed to increase because there was alternative funding sources. But with Prop 218 and the focus on Prop 218 these days, bringing your collection rates to achieve the cost of service has been a main focus throughout the state, not just here. So you are making up more ground. So it was a bit out of the ordinary, but we do see significant increases for those communities that had previously not been covering their full costs. In addition, there's additional services that are necessary due to SB 1383.
1383, right.
For the weekly collection of organics material, which you currently are having collected biweekly, so you're doubling the number of trucks and staff for that particular service. So it's not out of the ordinary. And with those two $5 increases, what we saw through the analysis and why we're coming back for some additional increases, there was still about a $2.5 million annual funding shortfall for your collection activities. That's why we're quickly not, January 1 is the next $5 increase, and we're recommending another increase July 1 of 2022. So that is, tends to be out of the ordinary to do it six months apart, but because there still is a $2.5 million shortfall, that is the reason for the recommendation.
So, again, I didn't want to get ahead of your presentation, but so the shortfall, though, is calculated on what the, that we're using more of our fund balance than we're bringing in to cover the costs of the daily operations?
The collection operations, that's, that's correct. You could rely on reserves in the past, and they're, as you'll see in a couple of my slides, that they are dwindling.
And when we were here early this year, it seems like a long time ago, but, you know, we were at almost $20 a month increase, and we chose to take about one-half of that and spread it over the, you know, over about a 12-month period. And, and now on top of that, you were, you know, with the 218 process recommending, so we're going to be roughly about two-thirds of what was being recommended in January, February of this year by this upcoming July. Is that right?
I believe that's the case with working with staff and understanding the upcoming expenses and the refinement of those assumptions has allowed us to bring it down slightly lower than what we had initially anticipated earlier this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you for taking the questions before you get your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
May I request I can take off my mask, or is that other question?
I wish you would, because I have a hard time hearing, and when I can't see your mouth, it's really hard.
I agree.
It's embarrassing, but it's true. Thank you.
Likewise. I'm the same way, so thank you. I appreciate it. Chair Frost, supervisors, again, I'm Rick Simonson, Senior Vice President with HF&amp;H Consultants. And over the last 18 months, our team at HF&amp;H has worked with staff to develop these rates that are proposed for both, or I should say all three, the landfill, NARS, as well as your collection operations. So I'll just go through just a few slides. I think Doug did a great job of setting this overview. I'll just quickly go through these bullets. As we've mentioned, there was a $5 increase to your residential collection rates that was effective March of 2021, and you have already approved a $5 increase for this coming January. And with regard to Kiefer Landfill and the NARS tip fees, they were last increased November of 2020, about a year ago. What's causing these rate increases? Just on the high level, there's a lot of capital improvements that are necessary. First out landfill, at the Kiefer landfill, developing a new module, expanding the landfill capability so more of the solid waste can be brought to the landfill. As well as a new organics facility at NARS, because of SB 1383, the yard waste and organic materials can no longer be placed in the landfill, either buried or used as alternate daily cover, so that needs to be processed into compost and mulch. So this facility will be built at NARS. And the replacement of an aging collection fee, so just overall without regard to 1383, the collection vehicles are at their end of their useful lives, and it's time to start replacing those. As well as because of 1383 doubling the number of routes for organics collection going from biweekly to weekly collection, new vehicles and the personnel associated with providing that service is a significant increase in your expenses over the next five-year period. And some of these, as Doug mentioned, will be debt-financed, in particular, the organics facility. It's a long-term asset, and it's appropriate when setting utility rates. It's good to have your main, your major assets that have long life to fund those over time as well, so not putting the burden on just today's ratepayers, but it will be benefiting those over the next 30 years. So that will be bond-funded. As well as some of the new vehicles over the next three years, some short-term financing over eight years, because again, those assets will be lasting more than just one year instead of burdening just your current ratepayers, that's going to be spread out over time. And this is in an effort to help reduce the rate shocks. We've been able to kind of feather in the increases, really phase them in instead of write all in one year. And the reason we need these increases, again, are the reserves are decreasing. If we do nothing beyond this next $5 increase on the collections, the 22, 23 projections, we're looking at about a $16.4 million deficit enterprise-wide, including the landfill, NARS, and collection. And we know that the collection rates, as Doug mentioned, the two $5 increases, we knew that wasn't going to be enough when those were last adopted. So we know we have some ground to be made up for your collection. We need to cover those full costs of services. And again, capital spending is increasing. So I'd like to illustrate that. This is a busy slide, but you'll see the same graph on the next three slides, so I'll spend a little time acclimating you to what we're seeing here. I will start with the graph itself, and this is a look at the fund balance. So starting with the solid green line in the year 1920, fiscal year 1920, you had ended the year at approximately $50 million in your reserves. In 2021, with some of the rate increases already enacted, we do see a significant decrease, and that's why we're coming to the board looking for additional rate increases. Those rate increases did help, as you see in that solid green line in fiscal year 21, 22. It's looking like we'll end the year approximately around $40 million. So we do see that uptick from the results of those rate increases, but.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I think that was a break. Supervisor Serna has a question.
Thank you.
Yes.
In terms of the baseline cost assumptions, your first bullet there regarding SB 1383 compliance, how exhaustive has there been a assessment of keeping that cost as low as possible? For instance, looking at, especially the food waste part of that, how, for instance, Regional SAN, our regional wastewater treatment agency, you know, how could they, how could that agency actually receive some of that feedstock, you know, for biodigestion at the plant and perhaps keep costs lower for, for solid waste? Has anyone done an assessment of that?
That's something I'm not privy to specifically, and I'll get back to that, but specifically for this baseline assumptions, it's about the vehicles, just the collection vehicles themselves, not how you process the material once collected. However, if there's someone with the department that can answer that it's not uncommon to use treatment facilities, so that's something that can be looked into. If it's not, hasn't been looked into yet, the assumption here is going to be processed into compost or mulch.
I saw Doug get up behind you. Can Doug come to the podium, please? Doug, you want to try and address that?
I can. We did check with Regional SAN after our meeting last week. Regional SAN, their approach is, currently, they don't have the capacity for any more material. What they're looking at, and the material they really want, is the commercial food waste that comes out of restaurants and things. Ours is going to have a lot of green waste, and it's not the, from what I understand, it's not the right material for what they're looking for. They really need wetter denser material, which is really your restaurant, the commercial franchise hauler, organic collection.
So that's not a real opportunity because of the mix of the waste?
Not, not currently, and I don't think it's in their plans, but we continue, we will continue to have dialogue with them.
Okay. You know, technology is moving fairly swiftly in terms of various opportunities to, you know, try and address the 1383 compliance challenge. So I would, you know, respectfully suggest that those discussions continue. In fact, this, some members of this board have been having other parallel discussions about how to actually maximize the use of different types of byproducts that come off of the digestion process out there in terms of biogas. So, you know, again, I'm hopeful that the, the fee adjustment that you're recommending today is really a product of exhausting every possibility of keeping our capital costs as low as possible, and whether it's, you know, the fleet vehicles or the processing equipment, that kind of thing. But I think we're all interested in some win-wins here, and, you know, we sit on various different boards and commissions where, you know, we can affect the direction of how that technology is deployed. So I would hope that that's the case, that we are maintaining those discussions.
We are.
Okay.
And we'll continue to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Can I, can I piggyback a little bit to Supervisor Serna, and maybe this is better for Doug? I appreciate you bringing those, those points up. I think those are all really great points, because I think based on the new technology, we will have opportunities to, to cut some costs because there will be a value to some of these, these commodities or these byproducts. And so, you know, maybe this is more, in, in the report that, that we were provided, dated October, your solid waste collection rate study plan, there's a, there's a line in there on the, page three of the introduction, and it says, the differences, let's see. You mentioned that there could be differences in the rates you recommend, maybe significant and materially affect the analysis and findings presented in the report. Can you describe what you mean by that? What are some things that might change some of your evaluation of the rates?
Yeah, great question. Anytime you're rate-setting, you're looking prospectively. This is projections, this is just meant to say, these are projections and assumptions that may change. If, for instance, we do have an alternative approach to processing organic materials, that would materially affect the cost moving forward. It could be a savings, it could be an increase. So with that caveat, these are setting rates based on specific set of assumptions without trying to quantify what each different assumption and change in that assumption could do. So we're just trying to let people know that any sort of forward look is just an assumption that can change based on, and what I should say is, this isn't a, let's look at this, put it on the shelf for five years and never look at it again. Our recommendation and what our clients typically do is revisit this on an ongoing basis, quarterly, annual, to refine these assumptions, to look for these ways of cost savings. So that's why we put the caveat in there.
I, I appreciate that. I mean, this is, obviously, this is, it is still a large rate increase over a period of time. I know we extended it out a little bit, and I was, I think, when I, Doug, when I met with you last week, I was wrong on my math. So this is really, in comparison to the recommendation you made in January, this is only about a dollar and 79 cents less than it would have otherwise been if we had approved that rate increase in January, correct?
Correct.
At the end of the term. So it's a very, very small decrease. But I was just curious, when I, when I saw that provision about things that could adjust your analysis, have you, in any of those jurisdictions that you evaluate when you're comparing Sacramento County or any other jurisdictions where you've worked, have you ever seen an occasion where a rate has gone down as a result of some kind of new approach or technological advance or something?
As far as new approach, nothing comes to mind but setting water rates for the town of Hillsborough, because we do utility rates for sewer water and solid waste. Through a Prop 218 process, this is a maximum rate, and the assumptions on the cost of water can change. And they, they did so. For each year over the last five years, we've reevaluated and re-analyzed the necessity for the rate increases, and the final two years of the five-year proposed increases were not enacted because of those savings that were not anticipated when the study was first done. I'm trying to think of any solid waste-related in the last couple of years. Again, these are maximum rates, so there is nothing to say that if circumstances change in three years and the anticipated cost of the new organics processing or collection services are less than, it doesn't mean, this does not bar you from doing something less than the dollar or $2 increase that we're recommending.
And that will be, I'm sure, something very important to all of us here on this dais, if, if those opportunities do arise. So Doug, I'm curious, I think a discussion we had, not only in January, but over, I think, preceding months, was about the recyclables market and how, you know, that was partly what was driving at least a portion of the rate increase, that the market was really unfavorable to us. But is that still a case? Because it seems like things have improved. Can you describe that or explain that a little bit? Is that having an impact?
I'll let Doug get into any more details, but yes, there was quite the dip because of the concerns with China not taking as many materials. It has rebounded slightly, and that has been put into the projections here, that, that increase in the cost or the revenues that can be derived from the processing and marketing of the materials. But it hasn't rebounded back to the pre-crash, I'll say, days.
And then the other thing, when Doug, when we talked last week, you mentioned that we were able to realize some cost savings because we're going to be leasing the trucks instead of purchasing them, right? And I understand that, you know, that really favorable lease terms these days because the interest rates are really great, and, and then your longer-term financing for some of your capital improvement projects. So what about at the end of these terms, either the, the lease term for the equipment? Well, I guess my first question, what will the lease term be for that equipment, Doug? Or, sorry.
It's.
Eight years.
Eight years. It is eight years. It's not a lease, it's just a finance, eight-year financing.
Eight-year financing, okay, I'm sorry.
And they typically last seven to 10, potentially up to 12 years, collection vehicles, so how much you can get out of it. It'll be time to replace them potentially, maybe a fraction of them, but yes, over eight years. But you'll own them.
I think you mentioned a 30-year term on the financing for our capital improvement projects?
For the NARS facility, sorry.
For NARS specifically, okay. And so maybe this is, you know, there's probably a simple explanation, but I'm, you know, just a dumb English major, and so when these, the terms of these financing projects is over, I mean, we're still stuck with a pretty, you know, we're still stuck with all these rate increases. Can you explain to me and explain why, okay, after the, the terms are over, say, that eight-year period of financing, the, the equipment now that we have, why wouldn't we see a corresponding decrease in rates?
That's a great question. Because this long-term financing, that's why you have 30 years for the longer-term asset, because it should last that long. With some annual O&amp;M maintenance and repairs, it should last potentially even longer than 30 years. So, but at that time, you'll probably need significant improvements to that facility. So maybe there's an opportunity for the rate to go down at that point, but that's the useful life of the typical processing facility. So that's why we don't recommend, even if you had the cash on hand, to pay for it in cash today, because it is a long-term asset that future ratepayers will benefit from. Likewise with the vehicles. Typically amortize those or lease those. Typically amortize those or lease those debt financiers over the life of that asset. And it generally runs seven to 10 years. So an eight-year term, if you maintain them in good condition, they cooperate, you can't always anticipate and keep up with the technology, that they should last maybe a little bit longer. So you'll be able to hopefully see maybe a lesser increase than you otherwise may have needed at the time. So let's take it into consideration. That's why you should, number one, look at rates at least every five years, if not more frequent.
More frequently, okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Great.
Excuse me, we have Supervisor Natoli.
Just to follow on to the last point, though, okay? So project us out for five years. We're raising rates under the maximum scenario here. I, it was more than, it's 82%. You said to fully fund. I assume you're recommending fully funding these in this rate charge? Is that right?
To the five-year period.
Yeah, 82%. So you get, at the end of the day, you're accounting for amortization of your vehicles, you're counting for increased costs, both labor, as well as obviously your fleet and leases and so forth. But what I didn't hear you say, and maybe it's because it's not where your analysis takes you, that at the end of five years, you should have sufficient fund balance, assuming there's not anything that's terribly unanticipated.
Correct.
And that you ought to be able to level off. And, and again, having sat here for the years I have and, you know, the ups and downs and certainly as it relates to both Kiefer and certainly to residential rates, we had a long period where we were leveled off, we held them static. So I guess what I would ask you is that, as you just responded to Supervisor Desmond, would you anticipate things being equal to what your analysis is here, that at the end of the five years, we will have paid for and will have the sufficient revenue to back up the retirement of the debt that we're going to finance, either the 30-year and/or the eight-year? You're accounting for CPI, you're accounting for labor, you're accounting for fuel, on and on and on. Don't know all those to, to, you know, to the exact number. But at the end of the day, in 2025, is it reasonable? Again, we've done this, certainly rate setting, both in our water analysis and in utilities with sanitation district, and have found, once we've gotten the major construction project completed and taken on other long-term capital, but also labor and so forth, that we come to a plateau where we can actually level off. I guess what's your crystal ball say about that? Because all this shows is raising rates.
Right.
Straight on through, five years, raising tipping fees, again, you know, the combination here. But it doesn't, it doesn't have a kind of a, a chapter in the story that says, well, we think, when you get to that point and you will have achieved X and Y, that here's, here's what Z is going to be at the end of the day. So I guess I'm, I'm curious, you know, you do this for a lot of different jurisdictions. What can this board expect? And I won't be sitting here, but, you know, I trust some of my colleagues will still be, and certainly the residential customers are still going to be in place. What's the take on that?
Yeah, great question. You know, I, I do wish I had that crystal ball that would tell me exactly, you know, six, seven, eight years out. But the reason Prop 218 has a maximum years that you can issue the notice and adopt rates for is because when you really get beyond, say, three years, but they've allowed five years, it's difficult to know how things are going to play out. You know, three years ago, did we know COVID was going to happen? No. So that's why we limit it to five years. But we know beyond that point, other unexpected things may happen. But what we're trying to do with this rate setting, specifically with the collection, is we know it's been operating at a shortfall, but each year just cover the costs that have been projected for the next five-year period. So presumably, once we've introduced the new 1383 organics collections, then it could be business as usual from that point forward. And we anticipate, if projections are exactly as they say, that you'd just be keeping up with inflation from that point forward. Or something slightly less, if we have some savings from the vehicles lasting longer than you anticipated, or those sorts of cost-cutting measures, or other cost-cutting measures. So the anticipation of what we did here is to generate revenues up to the cost of service, nothing more, nothing less. So the anticipation beyond the five-year period is dependent on inflationary-type increases.
So, and not to put words in them out, the short answer is, is that add infinitum, there's going to be a rate increase every year going forward. You don't anticipate there's going to be a plateau where we can get to a point where we've gotten some equilibrium, you funded these major expenditures, you all, you've, you've built in a whole lot of factors, some of them are not predictable, and whether it's fuel or, you know.
Correct.
But bottom line is, is what I'm hearing, you know, even with a maximum of 218 and, you know, again, it could be fuzzy five years out, is that, one, rates aren't going to go down, but secondly, there's probably not an end in sight for rates not going up every year.
No.
And that's a tough message to the customers, I'm telling you right now, because it doesn't, what it doesn't account for then is that, you know, well, what are you doing on the efficiency side and so forth to contain those costs? And we could be doing everything and still have a need for it. But when you jump 82% in five years, and we were able to hold rates steady, maybe to the detriment of what we're having to talk about today, but to say there's not going to be any relief going forward, so just get used to it, you're going to see annual increases, and that's just the way it is, that's not a very good message to the customer. I don't think people are going to, you know, because they look at government anyway, is that all you do every time you need to, to cover the, the gap is you just raise our rates. And I think there needs to be another piece to this, and I think that, you know, I don't know how much economy efficiency you've looked at, your, you know, your, your time studies and so forth, and you weren't employed to do that. But I, I think that there, again, you know, this board, you know, you can project out five years, but to sit and every year raise rates is not a very friendly message to the 156,000 people that we serve.
And if I may, or sorry, Chair, if you would like to make a comment?
No, go, I would, I'll wait for you to, I have a comment after you're, you're done.
I'm done.
Yeah, and that's always a concern of the ratepayers. So I want, the misconception is that with this Prop 218 notice, what we're asking the board to do, first you have to mail it, make sure there's no majority protest, and that if you do adopt the rates within the Prop 218 notice, it is the maximum rates allowed. It is not a foregone conclusion that that will happen. You must approve them each and every year 30 days prior to being adopted, the, the new increases. So what we're saying here is not, this is exactly what you have to do, it's just the maximum. And there's a tendency for the ratepayers to think, well, I know you'll do exactly the maximum, don't, don't give me that. But as I said, in the town of Hillsborough, the last two years, they needed 5% increases, but their costs were lower than anticipated, they had some cost-cutting measures on the capital side, they didn't enact the last two years of increases. So it does happen. And I believe this staff and this board will look at this in earnest over the next five years and make sure this is still what's needed. The difficulty here, and I wouldn't call it a difficulty, many communities do this, new services, that's where you have more of the assumptions that may or may not play out as projected. So this is, based on these current projections, these new services, what you'll need over the next five years to meet the cost of service. That doesn't mean beyond that, that you have to continue to increase rates at these levels. That is something that would be looked at in the next five-year review.
Just one comment, but, but we're looking to build a fund balance of approaching $60 million.
Yes.
Over the next five years. And I think that will be the tougher explanation, even though that backs up your ability to borrow and such, is to go to the customers, we've raised rates, whether the maximum, whatever they are within the allowable, and, and, and whatever this board acts upon annually, but that you're going to be approaching a $60 million fund balance, and then you're going to say, in year, year six, well, we got to raise it again because we got to cover costs, because we got to have $60, $60 million in the bank. I, I just, again, we've been operating, you know, in that $40 million range, you know, at one time it was higher. And I just, you know, at some point in time, that becomes a balance too, is that.
Correct.
You know, you sit on top of those dollars for the rainy day and/or to finance, and yet you continue to raise rates. And again, that's even a tougher message, I'll just say. I mean, people want you to be prudent about it and, you know, want you running the countdown to zero. Again, that was some of the projections we had, we were going to go into the red. But, you know, you, you raise these rates, not just for covering costs, it's actually to rebuild the fund balance, because some of that's going into savings, correct?
That is correct. And that's what the graph is showing here, is we don't just want to cover our costs, we know we need reserves for cash flow purposes, for both operating and for capital. But there should be a limit to that. So that's why we show on this graph the solid red line. There's kind of a band of where we'd like to be. We don't need to be there immediately. And if we start exceeding this, when you look at this in two, three years, you may be able to dial back on the projected increases that we're looking at today. So those are all fair questions, and this is not just about trying to get a favorable, favorable rate for debt financing. That is a component, but in typical utility rate setting, having the, you need your cash flow reserves in order to pay your bills on a day-to-day basis as you bill every once a month, or every two months.
I think we knew, you know, we knew early, you know, a few years ago, that this was coming, but we, it, it seems like we've had such great reserves and we haven't raised rates because we always had, we're flush with reserves, and then all of a sudden, there were things that were cutting into those reserves and the new requirements of the state that, from the state that are basically unfunded mandates, not to mention world conditions that are creating huge havoc on our service providers. It's like, there's nowhere to turn. My question is, do you see any potential help coming from the state on this, on these mandates that are upon us?
No, specific to 1383, no. It is an unfunded mandate and many communities are faced with what you're faced with, finding a way to do this. Many communities did have weekly collection, so it's not as big a deal. But unfortunately, with the bi-weekly getting the organics material, sorry about that, getting the organics material collected on a weekly basis is a burden on the county and their ratepayers.
So when you send out that 218 notice, do you summarize, you know, where this is coming from, why we're here and where this is coming from, so it doesn't.
Yes.
Look like we mismanaged our budget?
That's a great question, because yes, part of the Prop 218 noticing process, there's a requirement to divulge why the rate increases are necessary. And it's not about pointing fingers, but it's about explaining to the ratepayers of why the current rates aren't sufficient to pay for future costs.
Well, I'm going to let you go ahead because I think you're trying to do your presentation. We keep interrupting you, so.
But that's okay, this is a great conversation, and it does relate to these slides around the fund balance, and that's what these slides really are about. And the process that we go through and kind of phases we go through in deciding what those rate increases should be, so let me get back to the fund balance graph, the solid green line is your fund balance, your reserves, if you do nothing with the rates beyond this next $5 increase. So you see, yes, we had a great rebound here in '21, '22, but we do see, because of these coming costs, a decrease in that reserve balance. And we know we need to do something, but what is that something? So that's why we've included the solid red line and the dotted red line to give us kind of a target, we would like to be between that, those bands by the end of the fifth year. So let me explain first what the dotted red line is. That's 90 days of operating cash. So you bill bimonthly, and utility rate-setting industry practices is to have one and a half times your billing frequency in cash reserves. You have expenses every day of the week you need to pay for, but if you bill every two months, you will not have the cash flow in order to pay those daily bills. So in addition to, and that's around 30, up to $40 million by the time we get to '25, '26. In addition, that would be the minimum, we want that minimum. But you have capital expenses you need to also have cash flow for, as well as, as we're going out for the debt funding, what the rating agencies are looking for is a healthy reserve. So we've set that in 120 days, which really encompasses the capital reserve that we like to see when we're setting utility rates, which is about an average, it's the annual average of capital expenditures over the five-year planning period, which happens to be at a good level for favorable rates for debt financing at about 120 days. So we know that reserves are depleting. Let me set the baseline, you've already touched on the cost assumptions, because this will permeate the next two slides as well. First, the 1383 compliance, purchasing of those new vehicles to accommodate that more frequent collection, we are assuming that eight-year short-term financing, as well as the NARS facility. Again, we're assuming the 30-year bond financing for about $27 million for that facility, as well as some of the current collection vehicles, those that are being purchased over the next three years will also be short-term financed over eight years. Again, this will permeate all the next.
Before you leave that slide, can I just ask you, on the bottom, the debt coverage ratio?
Yes.
So at $40 million in reserve or fund balance, you're 22 and 1/3%. You cut that number in less than half and you're down to 5.8. How does that work? What's the math there?
Because issuing of the bond for the facilities, you don't currently have much, if any, of debt service. So the debt coverage ratio takes your annual debt payment and divides it into the expenses. You need to have at least typically 1.2, 1.25 times. So we're looking to maintain that debt coverage ratio. When you issue the bonds in '22, '23, that drops significantly because you're now paying $1, $2, $3 million in annual debt.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Thank you, Don.
And that's a great question. I didn't highlight there, row nine, the debt coverage ratio, without adjusting rates and issuing that debt, that would fall below by the fifth year, the minimum 1.2, 1.25 ratio. I apologize, Chair Frost, did you have a comment?
No, I was just thanking Don for his input.
Thank you. So let's move to the first phase. When we knew at current approved rates with that $5 and no changes in the NARS and Kiefer landfill tip fees, that we would deplete our reserves over the next five years, we looked first at, let's cover our collection costs. We knew there was about a $2.5 million deficit. So what would it take to break even for your collection operations? So we assumed each July 1 from 2022 through 2026 to have the increases, which averaged about $2 per month over those five years each year. It depends on what size service you have, less than $2 if you have a 30-gallon, and greater than $2 if you had a 90-gallons, gallon container. So with that, you see now our dotted green line, instead of the reserves depleting by '25, '26 with those proposed increases to just bridge the shortfall in your collection activities, we bring those reserves back up to about $30 million by the end of '25, '26. But you see that's still below that minimum level, just for maintaining cash flow for operations. So we knew with this scenario, it's not enough just to touch a collection rate. So what could we do to further bridge that gap? And we knew we had to look at NARS and land, and the Kiefer landfill tip fees. But just, and back to the debt coverage ratio, if we did do this, you see how that improves the debt coverage ratio, it's over two by the, the fifth year. So just, you can see the, the minor increases to monthly rates does improve that debt coverage ratio to satisfactory, satisfactory levels. So lastly, our rate objectives again are to bring those reserves up to the target, or at least approaching the target by the fifth year, and we exceed it just slightly. Also have the collection rate increases, as mentioned on the previous slide, they would be effective each July 1. And then $3 increases to the weighed materials being brought to Kiefer and the NARS facility. As Doug mentioned, no change in the non-weighed materials coming from the public, the pickups, the autos, in an effort to hopefully discourage illegal dumping, try not put the burden on the public bringing materials to the facility. So we've just focused, in this scenario, increasing the weighed material tip fees. And that, as you see, we are below the minimum for '22, '23, and '23, '24, but we're on the upswing, and that's. And that's what both bond rating agencies are looking for, as well as in operations, not trying to hit the public all at once and then leveling off, but trying to feather in the increases. And that's been our approach here. And again, our debt coverage ratio exceeds the minimum requirement of 1.2. What does that mean? We've touched on this. After having the two $5 increases, what are the annual impacts to your customer base? And that's shown here. I've circled it in red. Come July 1, 2022, about a $2 increase to your 30-gallon, and then increasing as you increase your level of service and size of container. And over time, again, decreasing by '25, '26, no service is increased more than $2. Here's a comparison of some of your neighboring jurisdictions. We took out of the report, so we show some footnotes there and none on the slide. I apologize for that. They're contained in the report. But just briefly, I'll explain. I've highlighted in yellow there the proposed rates, ranging from $31.93 per month to $43.46. And we compare at the very bottom of this slide, the average of all the other jurisdictions we show here. These rates are less than for your 60- and 90-gallon containers, and slightly more for your 30-gallon. And I must say, there's a caveat here. Where we could, we looked at current reports to boards and councils for the upcoming rate increases during 2022, because that's what we're proposing here, a July 1, 2022 increase. And where we had that information, we depicted it here, about five jurisdictions know what they plan on doing this forthcoming year. So Folsom, City of Sacramento, Elk Grove, they are already increasing their rates in order to accommodate the 1383 regulations. But many of the other jurisdictions are still weighing their options, so these rates presumably would increase in the next year. So it's a mixed bag of what we're comparing these proposed rates to.
Excuse me.
Our assumption is, some of these will increase in 2022.
Excuse me, Supervisor Desmond.
Thanks, thanks. I appreciate the charge. Actually, what you just said made me think. Are there other jurisdictions that you're seeing that are putting rate increases on hold or delay because of COVID? Are you seeing that in any of the jurisdictions that you're working with?
No, it's been, as far as rates go, business as usual, their typical schedule. If they update them on an annual basis, they've continued to do so.
I was just curious about that with some of these jurisdictions. The other thing is, you know, I, and again, this could be a question for Doug, we're not completely comparing apples to apples with some of these jurisdictions, because if I'm not mistaken, some of them do provide some additional services, like the City of Sacramento, for instance. I think they provide additional pickup services if you put debris or items out on the curb. And I think we only provide that free one time a year, Doug. Can you describe to me a little bit about how some of these jurisdictions may differ in terms of other waste-related services that are included in this, in these fees?
So I'm most familiar with the City of Sacramento. Sorry. It's getting a little warm. The City of Sacramento does have the CLAW, and it's a program they run November, and I think it ends in February. And essentially, it, you compile your leaves and green waste at the curb, and the city goes around, and they will pick that up on a regular basis. They don't run the program through the summer, so you have green waste containers to put that material in. We have opted, a number of years ago, we adopted the neighborhood cleanup. And it's, it used to be in a sweeping area. We would take, for example, the Rosemont area, hit that in one day, and then move on to another area. Now it's all designed by appointment-based, and it's done through Cubs. And so we actually have a routing program that helps us consolidate the pickups and change service dates, so that we can service four or five homes in a area, instead of going there four or five weeks in a row for one home. But our program is, it's a five-by-five-by-five pile at the curb, and we will pick it up the first time for free. The second time, we will charge $25. The third time, $25. The fourth time, $25. And so the piles are in increments of $25. We have some customers that will use the service 14, have scheduled 14 pickups in a year. So they get one free, and then they pay for the 13. If you compare that to the dumpster fee of $300, $400, $500, $600, it's a great deal for the customers.
So I'm thinking, and I appreciate, thank you for that. And so I hear from constituents, and they say, okay, it's, it's great that you have this comparison, but if I were in some of these other jurisdictions, there are some other services that are free. I mean, and I'm looking at trying to find the best deal for our constituents. You know, a lot of them are, a lot of mine are in the unincorporated area, so they're affected by this deeply. Have you considered maybe adding a second free pickup? I mean, I'm just trying to think, how can we sell this better to the public? Hey, yes, your rates are increasing, but you are going to be getting some additional services along with it as well. Is that something you could explore? And?
That is something that we can explore. One of the changes that we proposing to make in the program is, it used to be a calendar year program. And so we would get slammed in December with people, okay, I haven't used my Freebie yet. And it's a, it's a hard time sometimes to get drivers with the holidays, et cetera, et cetera. So we're proposing to move that to a rotating.
Rolling 12 months.
Rolling 12-month period, so that we don't bunch up people at, you know, waiting. And if you've had your appointment this year in a calendar year, we don't want a big backlog to continue into January, because people have. So the rolling would work, and we've worked that through Cubs to, that is a definite benefit.
Okay, but that doesn't mean someone would maybe get two free pickups a year. It would still just be one.
No, it'd still be one.
A year. Well, I'd like to see, you know, maybe explore what it would cost to provide people two free pickups a year, for instance, because that is something that a lot of my constituents ask about frequently. So I'd like you to follow up with me about that specifically.
Okay, can do. And just as a reminder, the $25 fee that we charge for the second pile is cheaper than bringing the pickup to NARS at $40.
Right.
So it's a tremendous deal that, I think it's between 7% and 10% of the people take advantage of it.
It seems like a small thing, but when you're talking about fee increases like this, I mean, if we can say, hey, we're also improving the level of service, services that we provide, that helps.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And if I may, you're right that these aren't necessarily apples to apples. And one other area that we see consistently is you're just residential operations. Many of these communities are both commercial and residential, and commercial rates tend to subsidize residential rates. So it is, it's hard to account for everything, but you've pointed out a couple of the services that other communities may be getting, but there's other factors at play as well. So if there's no further questions on the comparison, I'll just go to our last slide. This is just to give you an idea of the recommended rate increases of 3% for the, just the weighed materials on a per-ton basis, what that means. So increasing, you know, $1.60 for refuse this coming January, and then continued 3% increases through '25, '26. And again, this illustrates the non-weighted materials that the public are bringing in in their vehicles. We're not proposing to increase those over the next five-year period. And again, these are maximum rates. They can be looked at each and every year. But this will result in the, I shouldn't say will, it's projected to result in the fund balance shown on the previous slides to get to that target by the fifth year.
Can I ask you on those, on that last, I'm sorry, I'm digressing, but that last slide, those projections there, I noticed that Rockland was more than doubling theirs. Are they doing that in one year or over time, or?
No, what we're showing here, they're different service levels. So the three columns are different sizes of.
Oh, family, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's their current rates. Again, each community will be relooking at their rates. Typically, as you see from this list, communities adjust their rates on July 1. So we anticipate any of those that show an effective date of July 1, 2021, we anticipate they'll be increasing. It's difficult to tell this year. Typically, we'd say most likely by about a CPI increase, but because of 1383, these communities, I think, will be facing greater than CPI-type increases.
They're really low. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, great question. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Doug if there's no further questions. And as we proceed, if you do have questions of myself, I can come back up and answer those for you.
So just to recap, five-year recommended increase is part of the financial analysis that we did, approximately $2 a month on the 60-gallon cart. We looked at projected 3% cost of living at the facilities. Remember that in one of the questions that came up today on flexibility of rates and things, so we, we have to come back to the board on a regular basis for increase in the facility fees. And so one of the unknowns, a big unknown for us, is any change with the water board or air board that would affect Kiefer landfill. And so having the ability to adjust an annual rate increase to accomplish the compliance with the new regulation at the landfill can easily be done in this model, because those projects tend to be very expensive, if we have to put in new wells, new gas collection system, whatever that process is. So we do have flexibility on the facility side. The other thing that we've done in here that is different than our last proposal to the board, we moved street sweeping from the residential program, and we moved it into the facility program, so that the folks that are in the unincorporated area that don't get sweeping, we don't have to worry about their billing issue. Citizens will not be billed for the street sweeping. Those costs are covered under the facility proposed rate, which is a benefit, because we can't sweep all the streets, especially when you get into very rural areas. You're picking up a lot of gravel, sand, dirt, and it's really not effective.
Excuse me, Supervisor Nottoli has questions.
Yeah, Doug, thanks. And when I briefed with you, I asked about this, because in the rural areas, we don't have the street sweeping. Luckily, we got pavement that's holding together in some cases, but the roadside litter is a problem. And if you sweep streets, typically, at least that's what's in the road right of way, gutter to gutter, you're going to get a lot of that. And I asked you about it. You told me that there was some look at that, working with DOT and with water resources. But, and again, I'd be willing to take anybody in this room, anybody else who's going to go drive some roads with me, and just see the accumulation of litter. And again, I know you've been attentive to some of the issues we had relative to the routes to Kiefer landfill, and I appreciate that. And I know Caltrans has cooperated with this as well. But I guess, you know, to build it into commercial rates, and I'm going to ask the question for outlying areas where we probably haven't had ditch cleaning in a generation or so, but let alone any litter cleanup. It just accumulates in the ditch, some of it obviously deteriorates if it's paper products and so forth. But a lot of our rural roads, and certainly not just in the South County, I imagine you could go into other areas of the county where we have less densely populated areas, it looks terrible. It looks like nobody cares. And, you know, I know when I call your department or DOT, from time to time, you'll get a, you know, a crew out there, and we've had the COVID restrictions relative to the Conservation Corps, I guess, the folks we've employed to do, to do that. But what I guess I'd like to see, and I mentioned this to you when we briefed, and I think if we're going to continue to fund street sweeping through the commercial rates, then how is it, maybe once every generation, we could go out and do some rural litter cleanup in some of these areas? Because I can assure you that there's been areas that, you know, nobody's gotten to during my career with the county, probably. And it's sad, and, but the accumulation and the debris, and now the amount, and again, your crews are very good, and I want to sort of give you a kudo for, I know you say the 311 calls are down on illegal dumping, but I can tell you that there hasn't been any letup in the amounts, and I know my office calls infrequently. You take the 311 calls that come directly to you, but, and some of that is just the folks, I don't care if it was 25 bucks or 40 bucks, they're not going to drive to a distant location, particularly in some of the areas in South County. You know, they're going to find some corner, and there it is. In fact, over the weekend, I think, I know my office called in three locations that, just over the weekend, people just take the easy chair and what's left over the fence and dump it on the corner, and they're gone. And you just cleaned up a couple of those locations two weeks ago. A point, though, about the street sweeping is that I would like to see, and I think it's certainly would be value, and again, you're not going to do the whole county every year, but is that we institute as a part of the street sweeping effort, some litter cleanup in these areas. And we used to do Adopt a Street, and that worked well in some of the areas, but I know because of liability and coordination, that became, and that wasn't through your department, you coordinated, but it was obviously through DOT, and solid waste would pick up the orange bags. So I guess I'd like to ask that, and maybe you can elaborate just a little bit, but I don't want to get sidetracked here too much, but I did ask you about it in the briefing, because if we're now going to blend that, it's not visible in the residential rates, it doesn't have to have a separate rate for the franchise area, but there's nobody attending to the ditches out there. And I think it's sad. It's sad that people litter, and things fly off of trucks and whatever, but I think we have a responsibility in our public rights, a way to maintain it to some degree, and it just hasn't occurred, and I get it. So is there some thought about how we could implement something that would allow us to at least get to some of those areas of the county over time and do some cleanup?
There is. And one of the positive things that's been happening is Bruce Wagstaff has been working and bringing in different departments to deal with the homeless encampments and the cleanup and some of those. And in that process, we have a current contract with a company called Forenza Clean, who can provide services that department, or sorry, that county staff can't do in some of these cleanups. But because of that need, we do have somebody that can do sweeps in different areas. It's a two-man crew. We're coming back to the board on December 15 with a contract recommendation, so that we can add more litter pickup, another litter pickup team to our arsenal to be able to go out and do. But you touched on one point that's important, the COVID. We are utilizing, for a while, we couldn't use the Sheriff's Department teams to go out because of COVID and trying to get all the folks out there at one time. We've worked out an arrangement with the Sheriff's Department now, where they're cleaning the roads out near Grant Line, near Kiefer, Roseville Road, in front of NARS on a weekly basis. And so there is movement now, and this group that Bruce has is really been a great place to get everybody talking. Water Resources, if you remember, Water Resources has responsibility, if it's in a ditch or a waterway, if it's on a sidewalk, it's DOT. If it's in the curb, it's ours. If it's a bulky waste, but we don't pick up litter. But through these contracts, and we're going to, we're still researching, trying to develop another contract or two, to be able to go out and handle some of the litter. Exactly how we're going to pay for that, and which portions of this, I don't, I can't give you those answers yet, but we know there's a need, and we're continuing to work on it.
Well, and I would just say, at least on the solid waste side, that was part of the discussion when the SWOAS was dissolved, was that we would have the ability to focus, and we had done it even with the arrangement in the city and the county, again, using commercial franchise fees. So I wouldn't want to lose sight of that, because that was part of the conversation, not just illegal dumping, but litter cleanup. And we, it was a modest amount. I think they budgeted $100,000 annually, and we had Conservation Corps, Sheriff's crews when they're available, but they get called upon for lots of different things. And when you start talking about, you know, outlying areas of the county, you've got travel time and supervision and all that, and restroom facilities and everything that goes into the coordination. And so I guess I'll be very interested to see what you bring us next month and how that plays out, because I know there's plenty to pick up in our suburban and urban settings. But again, a coordinated approach that would plot out over time beyond the frequently traveled routes, and again, I thanked you, but I'll thank you again for some of the routes to Kiefer. We're doing much better this year than, this time this year than we were last year. But again, I just, it needs to be attended to, and if we're going to build this into the commercial rates, either through this particular budget unit and/or what we're receiving off the franchise fees, that was now coming all to the county for the portions that folks are paying into it, I'd like to see a little more attention given to some of those outlying areas. I think it's not just in District 5. There are other outlying areas that are adjacent to suburban settings. And I know people can stay busy full-time cleaning up some of the situations that we have, and full-time plus, but when you come in on December 15, we may have more conversation. Could I just ask? Can I just ask, I'm sure while we're doing this, so I know we're winding up, but before you get done, in the written staff report, we talked about this in briefing as well, the 9,500, give or take, customers that currently either have some sort of a green waste exemption and/or don't have carts at their houses, and how that's going to be rolled out coming July 1st, and what is going to reflect on their bill, but also, you know, some folks have just basically said, "I don't want that cart."
Right.
"I'll pay for the service. I'm not even getting the service, but I don't want it," and how you're coming to grips with that, because, and I would just say, I think a lot of those customers are probably in District 3, so get ready for that, so.
We're, we looked at that more from a blanket standpoint, and we started delivering recycling carts out to folks that had not one of them. We got some pushback from some of the folks. We're now looking at more of a one-on-one conversation with those folks to see what they need. There is, unfortunately, with 1383, some of it's a little bit of quicksand for us, because the law says I have to deliver refuse can, a recycle can, and an organics can to every house. It doesn't mean that the resident has to use it, right? But in some cases, we can get waivers for lack of space, and in some cases, because of population density in an area, we might be able to get a waiver for that. So we're continuing to explore all those options and roll this out, not from a standpoint of just delivering a cart now. We're really trying to do it more of an individual approach and talk to the customer. Part of that is to educate them on the process. This is not something that the department has come up with and mandated, it's a state mandate.
I think I asked by briefing, but I guess I'd like to know the number of customers, both in the franchise area, but also in the county area that covers D5. How many of that subset are in my district, just so I can be prepared?
So we are going to prepare that for all of the districts.
All of us, okay.
And we are also going to provide you with, by district, the list of the premium service homes in your area, so you know which ones are there.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. And a quick question, Doug, as you just mentioned it, actually, I was going to ask you about the premium service, and I think this is something that people should hear, that you have reduced the number of customers paying premium service. Can you just describe what you've done? Because that was something that's very welcome by many ratepayers.
So when we started this process of looking at premium service in the last rate study we did last year, we identified, I think it was 700 or 800 homes that were getting premium service. The language for premium service was developed in the early 90s, and it really was designed when we had a one-person truck or a specific type of truck that would have to service. Over time, if you had an address and you were on that circle or on that lane and you signed up for service, you automatically were signed up for premium service. So we completed, after our last presentation in September, we went through and physically audited every single house, every one of the 800 homes. Both ourselves and Waste Management, our contractor in the south. We looked at each street and with a new criteria in terms of with the street, the potential hazards, is there enough turnaround room so we don't have to drive in one way and then drive back up for an extended length of time? We whittled that number down, I believe it's 84 accounts. And so, we are going to provide you with that list by district of who is getting premium service, and we'd be happy to sit with your staff and explain why our new criteria requires them to have the service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing that, and that's important, those kinds of steps, always be evaluating the programs we have and whether it's necessary to be charging someone, you know, a premium rate.
So, thank you. One last thing, we actually, when we went back and looked at that list, we actually went, if they had been paying for premium service and weren't required to have it, we actually gave them a credit back for the three-year that we have in the ordinance that we can do. If they only owned the house for a year, they only got a year's credit, but we did make those adjustments for all the 600 or 700 accounts that we dropped from premium service, and that has all been taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, Doug, just very briefly, first of all, thank you for you and your staff and the work that you've put into this. I think we're in a much better place than we were originally. This is fair, comprehensive, and unfortunately, necessary for all of the reasons that you've stated before. I do want to, because I wouldn't be me if, when you're at the podium, if I didn't say we have to continue to look at new technologies.
Yes.
And as a way to meet our needs, and you know how I loathe to put more trucks on the road, but obviously, they're necessary at times, but please, continue to seek out new technologies. And then, second, this is off, but you brought it up. Thank you so much for the work that Forensic Clean has done in District 2, in some of the diceiest, sometimes most dangerous situations, they've done a fantastic job, so thanks for that.
Thank you. We'll pass that along.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
So, this is just some highlights. We're requesting tying the residential rate increase to July of 2022, which is, we are coordinating our efforts to start the weekly collection of organics in July with the other jurisdictions in the county. And so, seeing an extra charge on the bill with seeing weekly organics collection, in my mind, matches up well, so they see a new service coming in for the increase. We talked about the street sweeping program. Climate change, so one of the challenges that we were given when we come to the board for issues is to address our climate change plan, and so I just want to touch on this. We have all but one of our forklifts have been, are now fully electric, and I don't know if we had a forklift in last year's capital or not, but that one will get replaced with an electric forklift. Electrification of refuse trucks, we are required. The law said that in 2026, we were supposed to start buying refuse trucks, at least half of our new trucks that were all electric, that regulation now has been moved up, I believe, to 2024. We are still evaluating those. I know there's a couple jurisdictions, I think Folsom just was looking at electrification of two of their refuse trucks. That technology, in my mind, is not as far along as our transfer tractors. And so, what we're really focusing on now is, with your help and your approval on projects, we have gotten grant money from SACMED to improve the electric infrastructure at NARS, and it's my anticipation that our first electric vehicles there would be transfer tractors at some point. We are struggling right now. We have two yard dogs. They're the trucks that move trailers from the empty line into being filled at the compactor or facility, and then staged for delivery out to the landfill. One of our concerns right now is that even though there are electric vehicles, we think the lead time, we've heard lead time's as much as two or three years, and I don't think we can keep our two yard dogs working that long, so we may have to look at a diesel option just to bridge that gap. So the technology is there, but the supply of vehicles is not necessarily there, so. But I'm encouraged that we've done a lot of work. Brian Leibig, our principal engineer, and his team have really done a good job in trying to build the infrastructure. It's Bradshaw for the CNG facility, as well as anticipating electrification of all the vehicles that will eventually be at NARS. And again, this is just a balance of, as Rick mentioned, we're trying to balance the residential and the facility increases. Simply a slide to show what we had asked for, this is history, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. Here are the proposed increases by the different years and what the rate would be, so when you look at your comparison with other jurisdictions, and not all of them have approved rates, some are still negotiating with their franchise hauler. Again, we wanted to show you which categories would be flat fee frozen over our projected time length. Again, this is NARS flat fees. Here's a quick comparison to, the City of Rancho is still negotiating their agreement changes, but City of Elk Grove has approved some, City of Roseville. So, you know, our proposed 3577 is right in line with where some of the other communities would be in July. Again, this is, this is an interesting one. I alluded to this earlier. So you have our flat rates. I think all of us were concerned that when we raised the flat rate, we'd see a huge spike in illegal dumping. Our actual 311 call volume has not increased over that time, and I think part of the reason is because the other, our rate is still the lowest around for car flat-rate vehicles by far, the $40 rate that's proposed at NARS, the Kiefer landfill at 35. And again, when you look at our rates, it, we still are the low-cost provider to the residents. That doesn't mean they can't get a better deal through the ABNC program that we talked about. And our recommended action is twofold. It's the increase, approval to increase the wage fees at the landfill January 1st, and then approval to be able to start the Prop 218 on the residential site.
Thank you, Doug. For a great presentation, Supervisor Serna has some comments.
Thank you. So, thank you, Doug. Relative to the last few slides where you addressed the comparison to other jurisdictions, what exactly is our communication strategy going forward, should the board adopt this today, to explain that to the ratepayers? Because they don't necessarily aren't going to be too sympathetic with just the idea of a rate increase for obvious reasons, but is there a, are we giving some thought to how we explain where the rate that they would be paying falls within kind of the regional average, so that they understand that this is somewhat relative?
Yes, we have a whole team working on that, specific for the county, but we're also, it's in conjunction with the other jurisdictions when it comes to the new organics program in 1383. So for our rate increase, we are required to send notices out for Prop 218. We do have staff available to do community speaking events. We've got a pretty robust website and social media campaign going. We're trying to cover all the bases that we can to get the word out, and we have to, as Rick mentioned earlier, there are certain things that are required in the Prop 218.
Yeah, I'm not thinking so much the 218, you know, legal requirements in terms of noticing, I'm talking about what a ratepayer might get in their residential bill that helps explain that, why this is necessary, and how it compares with some of the other jurisdictions, I guess.
Oh, absolutely. Perhaps not so much in the comparison of rates with other communities, but there's a huge opportunity here when we, when all of us start the organic collection in July to really maximize our educational dollars in terms of the same message. New requirement from the state, we have to collect food with the green waste container. It's, you're going to see it on, in ads, on the radio, TV, you know. We have to do a really good job of announcing that if we want the program to be successful.
To me, that's the most important thing you've said this morning, because if we don't do a good job with that, there, I think the ratepayers are just going to assume that the board of supervisors woke up one morning and decided, hey, let's go raise rates, without understanding, you know, the why and, you know, the how, and in terms of what other jurisdictions are also doing, where we fall in terms of the amount that we're increasing.
And staff is already working on the drafts. I mean, they've been working really hard on the educational, the outreach campaign.
Great, and that'll be multilingual, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah. Thanks again, Doug. I wanted to ask about, because I know it was a topic of discussion some months ago, so on the recycling end of this, there's no recyclables going into the landfill, right? You've taken care of that, you can assure us?
That's correct.
Okay.
We're delivering everything that we collect out of the blue carts to a facility.
Okay. And I know folks present in the audience, but I'm curious, where are we with, you know, we've been going around and around about our recyclable contracts, so not to get into any negotiations here, but how, where do we stand on that? Because again, I think we're kind of tenuous, if I'm not mistaken, as it relates to, you know, having certainty about where our recycles will go in the future. So we have recycling industries, and obviously, you know, cow waste in the southern part of the county, so are we settled on that?
We've reached agreement with one vendor on a contract adjustment with consideration. We still haven't reached agreement with the other vendor, although I owe them back a response to their last letter, which I intend to do very shortly, assuming that we get the Prop 218 process going.
So, if, you know, I guess I'm hopeful that'll get worked out, but if it doesn't, we're not, our backup is not taking recyclables to the landfill. We will make other arrangements. Is that accurate?
That's, that's our goal. I've heard loud and clear from the board not to send any recyclables to the landfill.
Yeah, and again, I know we talked about unpredictability when Rick was presenting, and again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here as much as I'm just trying to be assured, because again, you know, obviously, you know, our work with private sector contractors and other public agencies is a piece of how all this fits together, and we truck materials out of county already, and I know we're doing our best to, you know, manage the waste stream as well as the recycles and the organics. I just want to be certain, because I think, and I'll just say it one more time for the record, that the expectation, we pick up the blue carts by the public, is they've done their part, we need to do our part, and it's not landfilling. And I recognize some of the stressors that contributed to the decision, you know, a year and a half ago to start doing that, but I know you've assured us, and I trust what you say, so I just want to be certain that we're going to do, work hard to figure out whatever arrangements we have, but we're not going to, the fallback is not the landfill or recyclables.
It's still my goal to work this out with the second vendor.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. At this time, I'm going to ask our clerk if we have any callers on the line. I do not see any public comments.
And I do not have any callers in queue.
Okay. We have no public comments and no further questions from the board, so we can entertain a motion.
I want to ask one question about the 218 process. When do you anticipate being back to this board? Because that's where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah.
Because we ultimately have to approve that.
So current timing, if you approved the recommendation to start the 218 process, we've tentatively scheduled a return to the board on January 25th.
Happy New Year. Okay. And I would move the staff recommendation to initiate the 218 process, and we'll see how that plays out when it gets back to us, so.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Supervisor Natoli and a second by Supervisor Serna.
Could I interrupt for just one minute?
Sorry.
I think the requested recommended actions are two.
Right, and also, the staff recommendation is to raise the tipping, to adjust the fees at Kiefer and NARS, is that right, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted it to be on the record that you're moving for both.
I intend that to be a part of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Doug and Rick, for helping and answering all of our questions today. Good luck with your work, and we'll see you in January. Next item, please.
Item two is the workshop on affordable housing fee deferral and waiver program fee waiver cap.
Good morning, Mr. Davidson.
Good morning, actually, good afternoon.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
And I am Bob Davidson, the Division Chief of the County Engineering Division, and I'll be presenting this workshop. I just want to point out from the outset that today's workshop was actually... workshop was actually the result of a team that was put together, that included myself and Dorothy Kadani with County Engineering, Christine Weickert and her staff with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, or SHRA, and Christoph Dobson with the Sacramento County Regional Sanitation District, or Regional SAN, in the Sacramento area sewer district, and also, the, the report was prepared in coordination with the Department of Transportation, and the Sacramento County Water Agency, and also the Department of Finance staff that actually administers the fee waivers that are being discussed today. So, to start off with a little bit of background, on April 6th, while considering amendments to the affordable, the fee deferral and affordable housing waiver program ordinances, the Board directed that staff return with workshop on the fee waiver cap, due to the situation that was being talked about, that there was a backlog with these fee waiver caps, with these fee waivers, and that the cap was hit, and I'll explain the cap in a second, and then the suggestion was maybe to increase the cap from 200 to 400 to 500. So, anyway, I'm going to start out with, with a little bit of background, because there are various fee deferral, and what we're talking about today, affordable housing fee waiver programs, that are offered by several agencies, so, including the Sacramento County Water Agency, the Regional Sanitation District, and Sacramento area sanitation district, and SAC County, which has several fees that are subject to its cap, so, in this workshop, we'll address the fee waiver caps for the affordable housing waiver programs, in which the, just for a little bit of definition, the total number of fee waivers are limited annually to a certain number of waivers, and a waiver means that a developer, for a fee that's waived, doesn't have to pay the impact fee related to the fees that are being charged for, for normal housing, that's, that's not affordable and subject to a waiver, and the total amount of waivers that can be approved for each of these programs in a year, which is what we call the cap, and these fee waivers are available only for qualified affordable housing projects which are certified by SHRA. So with that, I'd like to put a exhibit up on the overhead. So, one of the things that was first discovered when we convened this team after the April Board meeting, was that there was not just one cap, I know that everybody said that the cap was, was hit, and it certainly was stopping affordable housing projects that maybe could be going forward with the fee waivers, but it's important to understand that there are actually several caps, so for example, there's a Sacramento area sewer district cap for the Sacramento area sewer district fees, and that cap is 200, there's a county cap, and the county cap covers the, the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Program, the Transit Impact Fee Program, several plan area fees like Antelope, North Vineyard Station, Florin Vineyard, Vineyard, and North Vineyard Station, and also the countywide library fee, and then, the Sacramento County Water Agency has a cap of, for the Zone 11 drainage program, and also, it has a cap for the Water Agency Zone 40 program. All of the caps are 200, except the Water Agency cap, which is 100, likely due to the size of that district, but there are five caps, not one cap, so with that, this exhibit also shows the, the usage of these waivers over, well, since 2008, 2009, so, and what can be seen from this exhibit is that these waivers have been available for a long time, and they have been utilized, but actually, the county or the, these other agencies were never in the situation where they were even close to the cap, until 2019, 2020, and in that year, the cap was hit, I do have an asterisk there, because there was a project called the Rayleigh Gardens 46 project, which ultimately didn't, didn't go to construction, and so, so 91 of those units were not utilized, and that's something we'll be talking about a little bit later, and then in 2021, the Regional Sanitation District hit the cap at 200, no other waivers were approved that year, and then the current year to date, the Regional Sanitation cap has already been hit, and the various other waivers have been approved for the other agencies. So with that, I'll go back over here, so like I said, the team was convened after the April Board meeting, and we reviewed the, the fee waiver cap situation, and found several things, well first, we found that waivers were counted as if there was only one cap, and that's, that certainly was a problem, because there's five programs, and even though clearly, at least in the past few years, and this year, the sanitation district has reached their cap, well, the other programs didn't reach their cap, and staff wasn't necessarily administering it as, as per ordinance, and, I'll be talking later, but that's something that's already been cleaned up, but, so not only was there an issue, where the sanitation cap was reached, but also, it was deemed that the other caps were reached, which wasn't the case, now, and, and like I said, the regional cap, sanitation cap, it's the only cap that's been exceeded, and, and part of the reason for that is, the sanitation district obviously has a much bigger service area than some of these other agencies, especially the ones that are just in the county unincorporated area, sanitation district includes Sacramento Citrus Heights, Folsom, Rancho Cordova, and Elk Grove, and a lot of these affordable housing projects are happening in the cities, so when an affordable housing project happens in the city, it hits the regional sand cap, and doesn't hit, say, the county cap, you know, for the transportation development fee program, so, so with, so with that situation, you, you have development happening in the cities with one cap, you know, going up to its limit, and it's still availability for several other programs, and in addition, we did identify administration issues, like I said before, waivers were authorized and were not used, the Rayleigh Arts project was an example, also, there was a project called Quail Run, where 22 units were denied because of the regional sand cap being hit, but after our effort started, that was noticed, and staff went back to that developer, and the Quail Run project is now eligible for the 22 units that were previously denied, and they're certainly authorized for waivers in this fiscal year. So, with that, that gives you a little bit of background on the fee, affordable housing fee waiver program, the fee waiver cap, and the situation that led to the perception that there's a backlog, and I guess more than a perception, there was a backlog, and, so with that, now I want to tell you about what we can do about it, like I said, we're not recommending today that we increase the cap to 400 to 500, but we do have measures that, no action will be needed from the Board today, but we have measures that, mostly with the sanitation district, that, with ordinance that are going forward, that should resolve this current backlog situation. So, so first of all, it's, so, so like I said, Christoph Dobson with the sanitation district is part of this team, and he's, I believe, on the phone today if there are any questions for Christoph, but there's going to be two ordinance amendments that they will be proposing, that will affect this cap situation, so the first one is to base regional sanitation district waivers on ESDs rather than dwelling units, and ESD is equivalent single-family dwellings, so, the issue with the ESDs is that, as I mentioned, there were five programs here, but the Regional Sand program is the only one that actually funds the fee waiver cap program within its program, and they were able to do that because they got an opinion from their council, if they funded at a certain level, that, that would be considered de minimis, and that they could fund the fee waivers in the program, so because they're funding the fee waivers in the program, and they amended their ordinance many years ago to fund the waivers in the program, they actually calculated based on ESDs and on dwelling units, and since most of these affordable housing projects are multi-family dwelling units, the 200 cap in the ordinance basically states its dwelling units, but the calculation behind how they funded in their program was based upon ESDs, so with that, there's a simple ordinance amendment that the sanitation district is already working on, that they'll present to their Board, I believe in late January, where they'll acknowledge using ESD for the regional sand cap, and with that, and there's 0.75 equivalent single-family dwelling units per ESD, that basically would increase the cap, assuming that it's all multi-family units, from 200 to 267, so, right there is one way there, that the regional sand cap could be increased. So, a second measure, which will even have more of an impact, is, again, I told you that they fund the waivers in their program, so, and, and prior to 1920, the 200 unit waiver cap was never reached, well, regional sand staff has reviewed their ordinance and believe it can be changed to allow a rollover of unused fee waivers from previous fiscal years, this is achievable since they fund the waivers in the program, therefore, it's logical to allow the waivers to roll over to future years, because they've been paid for, or will be paid for by future fee payers, so regional staff is also preparing an ordinance amendment that would allow such a rollover, and they would go back to 2013 and 14, when they amended their ordinance and started funding the fee waivers in their, their program, so with that, there would be about 1,000 unused fee waivers available by allowing for this rollover, so with the two measures that I just discussed, with the regional sand, considering the ordinance to allow for the ESD change, and to, to allow for the rollover, that would basically allow about 1,300 additional fee waivers available for the coming, coming years, so, so we felt that that was a real good result, and certainly a result that's going to help, if not eliminate, this backlog.
Excuse me, Supervisor Natoli had a question.
Yeah, just on your last point Bob, about the backlog, because that's some of what, you know, obviously, I think was some of the questions we were getting that didn't pose, you know, this look that you're going over, so, that backlog has been identified, and is it your take that once the ordinance amendments were presented, and assuming they were approved by the sanitation district board, that there could be a fairly expeditious addressing of that, because I know folks, you know, in some cases, obviously, are in application periods, and, you know, knowing what this piece of it is, whether it's the sanitation district or any of the other waivers, you know, is, you know, is a key piece of how they put their, their programs together, so, what's your sense about that backlog? I mean, you know, because that was part of the complaints we're hearing, is that people were just being turned away at SHRA and/or other places, because, you know, there wasn't capacity in that, in that given year, so, what's your sense about that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I believe that once the sanitation, sanitation district takes action, and then, I know there's a waiting period for implementation of the ordinance, that the waivers will be available, I believe SHRA and county staff are communicating with affordable developers, so they kind of know this is coming, so I think there's going to be an attempt to not let a project just die, because if the waivers are available, and just simply by waiting, they would have been able to move forward, I'm pretty sure that communication's going on, Christine Weickert, potentially, if, she's nodding her head, so I believe she agrees with what I said, but.
Okay, so, because there was a bit of a queue, it wasn't dozens, but it might, you know, there was, you know, several projects that had been identified, that had sought or were waiting kind of in the queue, and obviously, there are other sequential aspects of applications and such, but, okay, well, that's good to know, so we've, who's doing the communication?
Well, I would start with Christine Weickert, with SHRA.
So, SHRA, do all the projects go through SHRA?
Yes.
They do, okay, so, all of those projects would go through, even those that would be in the incorporated cities? Okay, all right, very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, with that, and I'm almost at the end of the presentation, other adjustments are with the fee administration, so by implementing the fee waiver caps as separate caps, this will also improve the utilization of the program, because we, I don't know if we have a, if we know if there's certain projects that didn't happen in, in the county because waivers weren't approved, but, but now that it's realized that the regional sand cap does not stop other developers, let's say in the county, from using the county cap space to pay for their, to have their Sacramento County Transportation Development fee ways, for example, or in their library fee, fees way, for example, you know, other projects will be able to move forward, and also, the, even the Sacramento area sewer district was not, you know, at the, the cap, it was only the regional sand, because of its boundaries with the cities, that was even, even at the cap, so, so with these changes, improved communication and administration, not only will there be 1,300 plus or minus waivers available with the, with the regional sand program, but there will be better utilization of the other programs that are all under the cap at this time, so with that.
Oh, go ahead and, go ahead and finish, I'm sorry.
And I'm almost done, so with that, and so we, we are not recommending that the county, the water agency, and the SASD caps be increased at this time, but they're well under their caps, they do not fund the waivers in their program like the regional sand district program does, but with better communication, SHRA and the county, and, and the districts will watch the situation, and if we get to the situation where they are getting close to the cap, certainly, that will be addressed, you know, when that occurs. So, with that, I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for the team working on, on, on this review, and also, we did meet a few times with the Sacramento County Housing Alliance, who I believe were, brought up some of the original concerns, and the meetings were pretty good, and, and I believe that they're supportive of the discussion that we're presenting today.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my presentation, and I, or Christoph, or Christine, or others maybe can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy had a question, and then, we'll see if Christoph has any comments from the phone after Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you Chair, you know, I really appreciate the work, this is, a couple of things here that you don't always see in government, one is it's logical, and two is different agencies actually talking to each other, so I think that we're, you know, taking leaps and bounds steps here, and I, and I really appreciate it, yeah, because it's, it's almost, even look, when I read the staff report, it's almost, it was almost a self-fulfilling prophecy, that, you know, we, we can't, we don't get more applications because the cap, but yet we're saying, but they haven't exhausted the cap, you know, so, this makes perfect sense, so thank you for that. The one question I do have, you brought up Sacramento Housing Alliance, and in their letter, they did say that they, they supported the staff recommendation, but they did have one addition, I'm just going to read it, I know you've read it, but just for the record, and since they can say it better than I can, it says, "We also recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize waivers for affordable housing developments under construction that were unable to receive a waiver because of the cap provided the development has not yet received their certificate of occupancy, this is an important additional change that will ensure affordable housing developments, but, that were eligible but unable to receive the waiver can benefit from this change." Do you have a comment on that?
I think Christine maybe can comment better, so let's have Christine take that one.
You can just nod your head in the record Christine, thank you.
Yes, we are aware of that project, there is one project, and we are, right now, they've applied for a deferral, but we will be able to change that to a waiver, well, it's under construction, so we will resolve that issue for that project.
Okay, great, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, and at this time, I'll ask our clerk if we have any public comments on this item.
We actually do have maybe a couple, but at least one.
I did, I guess I forgot, I had mentioned, I was going to ask Christoph if he wanted to make any comments.
Oh, okay.
I think he's on the phone, or.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Mr. Dobson.
All right, thank you, this is Christoph Dobson, I am the district engineer for Regional Sand, and Bob laid it out there, just as I would have, I'll just mention the, the timing that we're working on the ordinance changes right now, and we're targeting the January 26th Board meeting to introduce amendments to our ordinance, and then, they would be meeting to introduce amendments to our ordinance, and then they would be adopted February 9th and effective March 11th. So that's just the timing of the ordinance changes, assuming there's no, you know, glitch in that, but that's our plan for right now, and we're still on that schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Okay, at this time, we'll ask for public comment.
Yes, can you please transfer the caller? It might only just be one.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Hello, Madam Chair members, Mike Kelly with West Development Ventures. First, I'd like to thank the board, as well as the various agencies involved in the program for taking time to discuss this matter. I've utilized the fee waiver and deferral program on five separate occasions, and really do appreciate the agency's time to review and discuss the opportunity to roll over these waivers and talk about best practices to improve the process. I think it's important to note, these waivers really do matter. For affordable housing developers, it's the same as cash. I don't know what the exact value of the waivers are, should they be rolled over, but I do know it's a very significant number by anyone's standards, that will help produce hundreds of additional units. Also, as you can imagine, it's difficult to coordinate a myriad of documents required by the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, as well as debt and equity providers with the four or five different agencies. So taking the time to increase coordination and cooperation is truly appreciated and important. So I guess I'd say my only observation at this point is to echo the Sacramento Housing Alliance's comment relative to allowing projects that have not received a CFO to utilize the waivers. And second, for the board to consider staff capacity at the Department of Finance. DOF handles all the intake and coordinates processes, the documents, which can be particularly burdensome during the closing process, you know, commitment letters, deed of trust, ordination agreements, and other recordable documents. So I'll say currently, staff, Tanya, if I can say her name, has been just amazingly efficient, but with the possibility of more projects being produced, the increased workload can become problematic for everyone. So just a couple of observations. In short, I would agree with the thoughts put forward with the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and as well as the staff report. It's very obvious the agencies have put a lot of thought into this matter, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And that concludes your public comments, and I'll close the comments now.
Thank you. And Mr. Davison, and Mr. Dobson, and Christine.
Christine Weichert.
Christine Weichert, I want to thank all of you and your teams for your out-of-the-box thinking and, you know, ability to find a solution, and we appreciate the presentation today.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And did you need direction? I mean, you're bringing it, I think we're, it's pretty.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it appears that there's consensus that this is a good thing, so.
Yeah, no action is required from your board, it's a workshop, the only action would be to provide any direction as your board sees fit.
I would just say that you have set the expectation high, so keep doing this.
Yeah, yeah, and we do have some comments from Supervisor Natoli also.
Yeah, I want to certainly thank the team that you outlined or acknowledged, but I also wanted to thank Ann Edwards. You know, this question came up even before she was our interim county executive, and certainly our county executive, Ann, under her direction, and certainly with the leadership that's here in the room, people were pulled together, we took a serious look at it, we found where there were some shortcomings, but also where there were some opportunities. And I just, I want to thank you, Ann, for seeing to that got to the board. I can tell you, I can recall, at least on a couple of occasions, going back probably a year and a half ago, or maybe even longer, where I asked about this, even in the public setting, and it took a while to get it here, but I think in the end, it was, you know, certainly worth waiting for, but I think has a promise for really helping us in one area of trying to, you know, I think, you know, not so much create, but I think motivate and provide some backdrop for additional housing in this community, which is so badly needed. So thank you for seeing to that got to us.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli, and thank you, Ann.
Well, thank you very much for that, and I really particularly want to thank the team for working on this, and I really have to thank Deputy CEO David Villanueva, too, because he really dug in on this one to assist.
Great, thanks to all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have a little bit of a break before our next item, because it was timed at 1:15, so I would respectfully ask that you would call for a recess.
Okay, at this time, we'll take a 10-minute recess. It's perfect. Okay, welcome back from recess, this meeting is called back to order. I don't know if we need to call roll, or not.
Yes, Supervisors Kennedy, Natoli, Desmond, Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, and for item number three, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency and Sacramento County Water Financing Authority, approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act term sheet, and the acronym for that is WIFA. And so a credit agreement and a fourth supplemental installment purchase contract in connection with the financing of a portion of the water agency's Arden Service Area Distribution System Pipe Realignment and Meter Installation Project.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost and Board of Supervisors, I'm Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. The item I'm bringing before you today is the approval of the Water Infrastructure Financing and Infrastructure Act loan for the water agency, which I'll reference as the WIFIA credit agreement going forward. The water agency intends to finance costs associated with certain additions and improvements to the agency's water system comprised of the Arden Service Area Distribution Pipe Realignment and Meter Installation Program. The WIFIA credit agreement was selected as the method of financing due to the advantageous rates that are provided through the program that essentially would save the agency approximately $1.9 million over the term of the loan when compared to a public issuance of debt. Moving on to the slides, I'd like to identify the key terms of the WIFIA loan. The amount of the loan is identified as $81,215,031. This amount is under 49% of the total estimated cost of the project, which is the requirement of the WIFIA loan program that 51% or more is matched by the water agency. The final maturity will be June 1st of 2060, and the payments will be interest-only until the first principal payment on June 1st, 2029, which will smooth the debt service for the water agency, as the final payment of the Series 2019 bonds is June 1st of 2028. The interest rate is currently estimated at 2.08% as of October 20th, and the debt will be issued as parity debt, meaning that the lien position will be equal to all other debt currently outstanding within the agency's debt portfolio. S&amp;P and Moody's have provided ratings for this potential credit agreement, as required by the EPA, and during the review process, S&amp;P has upgraded the water agency's credit to, rating to AA-, which aligns the two credit ratings within the high-grade credit. Moody's carries a rating of AA3 and maintained that rating. In addition to the recommendation, so that's slide one, going over all the terms. If we could go ahead and move on to slide, oh, I've got that, I'm sorry, my apologies. So this slide shows the debt service with the addition of the WIFIA credit agreement. You'll see that we have the 2007B bonds and the 2019 bond debt service that's currently outstanding, and then we'll wrap in that 2021 WIFIA credit agreement. In addition to the recommendation to the board to approve the WIFIA credit agreement, the agency and the Office of Budget and Debt Management will come back before the board in December to recommend approval of an additional interim financing for the interim revenue bonds in order to achieve additional savings of approximately $1.8 million during the construction period. This is shown on this slide, you'll see that we have the 2021 WIFIA loan draw, that's if we just issued the WIFIA loan, and then in the second column, you'll see the 2022 revenue notes, along with a WIFIA draw in 2025. The agency will be, oh, sorry, the WIFIA credit agreement allows for the unique opportunity to lock in those long-term interest rates in December when we close on the WIFIA credit agreement, and then issue short-term debt, taking advantage of the interest rates during that five-year period, which reduces the interest that we would actually pay during that construction period. The agency will be required to pay a portion of the interest on the interim financing mechanism, however, that will be paid in short-term interest rates estimated at 0.37% compared to that 2.08%. In addition, we plan to issue the interim financing mechanism with a premium, which will be used to pay for the costs of issuance and a portion of the interest that would be due during that construction period. We are not requesting the approval of the interim revenue bonds at this time, but we will be back again in December. That concludes my presentation. Both Michael Peterson and Herman Williams are here from the water agency. We also have two representatives from PFM, Nick Jones and Darren Hodge, on the line from our financial advisor, and we also have Jenna McGann from OREC, our bond counsel, on the line, if you should have any questions that they need to answer.
I have a couple of questions. So is this a capital appreciation bond? Is this a negative amortization that's taking place as we're only paying interest? And third question is, is there, is it fixed, or are we subject to inflation?
They are fixed interest rates, and they are not capital appreciation bonds. The fixed interest rate is actually, that's one of the key advantages of this WIFIA credit agreement, is that we get to lock in that long-term rate, but we don't actually pay on it until we draw down on the amount of that credit agreement. So in this interim term, what we'll be doing is relying on the issuance of the interim financing mechanism. We'll use that for the proceeds that we need to complete the project. Once the project is completed, we'll draw down the WIFIA credit agreement and start paying on that agreement at that point in time, but we will have already locked in the rates at that 2.08% approximately within the next month.
And then, when you begin paying it, when you draw it down and begin paying it, it's amortized over 30 years or whatever?
Not until 2060, yes, that's correct.
But the terms are set before you draw on it?
That's correct.
So when you draw on it, it's a matter of the amount and the calculation based on the terms that are preset?
That's correct. There's no balloon payments associated with the WIFIA credit agreement, and it's just a regular calculation, as if it was a mortgage that you're just paying interest on for the first five years, and then you start paying on the premium, you'd be paying the principal and interest after that. And again, I mentioned that the first principal payment date would be June 1st, 2029. So more than five years, but we're not, we're not pulling down on that WIFIA credit agreement until 2025.
Okay, that's, that's good. I wonder if any of the individuals on the phone would like to speak, or are they just here for questions?
They're primarily on the line just for answering any questions that you should have, yes.
Okay, I do not see any questions from the board at this time, and I'm going to ask if we have any public comment on this.
We do not have any public comments at this time.
So you're asking us to approve the forms and authorize the execution and delivery of the documents to set this in motion?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you very much, Colin, appreciate your time, and now we are in a position where we wait until 2:00 PM.
We recess.
So I guess maybe a half-hour lunch is in order.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess our meeting until 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Gentlemen, this meeting is of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, is hereby called back into session, and we'll call the roll to establish quorum. Yes, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item four is the 2021 redistricting discussion and selection of draft district boundary map. Madam Chair, I'll let you know that we do have at least one public comment in queue. I'm not sure if you want to follow the same format as last night, or you have a new one for today.
I think we'll have an opening by Natasha, and then listen to the public comment, and then pause public comment until we deliberate.
Yes.
And then go from there.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're here today to continue our conversation on redistricting. Doug Yocum is here, he's prepared to lead off where you ended last night, though I think it would be helpful to hear from you how you'd like to proceed this afternoon. And that's all, that's all the comments I have this afternoon for you. Would you like Doug to come up?
Yeah, Mr. Yocum, do you have comments before we begin, or should we quickly take the public comment, or what do you think?
Public comment would be good to start with, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the staff is getting them ready to transfer over. Hello, my name is John Merchant, I have been here before, I'm a 35-year resident of Rancho Mariupira, and I just wanted to call to reinforce our initial community input that we would like to remain in the district that we're in, which is District Four.
We were redistricted in 2010 when we were removed from District Five, and some of the discussion to date has been that we might go back there, being that it appears, rather unfortunately, that District Five will have a new election in June, we would get a new supervisor, and that would be our fourth supervisor in 11 years. So with the issues that are confronting us going forward in the next 10 years, I think it's real critical that we establish some continuity. The purple zone in District Four, we're at the bottom of it, but I want to reinforce for the last time that everything that's in that district moves to the north, that will impact us over the next 10 years. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your diligence, and good luck with the rest of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And please transfer the next caller, and I believe that's all that we have as of right now. Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes. And do you mind muting the meeting in the background?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon, Supervisors, Andres Ramos again, I hope you're doing all very well, I know we're all close to the end of this journey, but I just wanted to call in, following up from last night's hearing, and just to really share my thoughts and concerns, it seems that a lot of the discussion has been. It seems that a lot of the discussion has been focused not really on trying to best incorporate the community's input and feedback, but a lot of discussion around what you all as individual supervisors want for your districts. And I just really want to emphasize that redistricting is supposed to be focused on keeping communities together for fair and effective representation, not the sort of I want this area for X, Y, or Z reason. And there's been a lot of comments, like the gentleman who spoke before me about Rancho Marietta and what that community wants, and I think it's had the most public comment in terms of written comments submitted. A ton of people called in last night about the API community in the South County area, but yet I've heard very little discussion by you all about how you can incorporate that as best as possible into the maps. You know, I heard some talk about keeping a line here between Districts One and Two. I haven't heard any public comment, no constituency of people asking for that. And so I understand that as supervisors individually, you may have a desire for the map to look one way or the other, but really the seats, the seats belong to the community, not to you as individuals, and ultimately the community's desire should be incorporated. And so respect what the people in Rancho Marietta want and try to incorporate that. Respect what the people in the South County want and try to incorporate that. And so I want to thank Supervisor Kennedy for mentioning the public comment from the community in the South County and suggesting that that be considered. I ask that you follow that leadership and please try to incorporate our request to be kept together in the South County, same as with Rancho Marietta and other communities that have weighed in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we begin, is that the end of our public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the gentleman that just spoke.
Okay.
And hopefully he's, he's watching. He made a statement that is very inaccurate. He said that when he mentioned discussion about the lines between Districts One and Two and that no one had called in advocating adjustment to those lines, we had nearly 20 people be very clear that they supported two of the early maps that were produced by NDC. In each of those cases, the southerly boundary between Districts One and Two were kept, kept pretty much as is. So I don't know if you missed that, but there was a very large portion of folks that called in, including a representative from the NAACP, that made it very clear that they had a specific preference for the lines between those two districts.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Okay, and do we have any other public comments?
No, Madam Chair, not at this time and we'll leave the comments open.
Okay. Well, for now, we'll go to, we'll keep comments open and come back to them after we deliberate.
Yes.
Okay, and so did you have any comments, Doug, before we begin?
Sure. Afternoon, Doug Yocum with National Demographics Corporation. I've been joined today by the president of our company, Doug Johnson. He's come here hopefully to witness the, the closing of this particular issue in Sacramento County.
We're hoping to.
I'm wearing my Dave Cox tie today. When I grabbed it this morning, it reminded me of a story, if you'll indulge me for just a moment. Dave became leader in 2001, a redistricting year, and he, he came to me and he said, "I really don't know what I'm getting into regarding this issue." And I said, "You're right. You're going to be the guy who has to decide who gets Hammett." And if you're not familiar with Southern California geography, Hammett is a tiny little town in Riverside County that at the time was highly Republican and full of senior citizens. And it was, it was fought over in the 1991 round. And so he looked at me and he said, "That's my job?" And I said, "Yes, that's, you're going to have to decide who gets Hammett." And so during the 2001 round, he had very many, quite a few Hemmets that he decided on. And he, he did it because he was a guy who was very good at getting, getting people together, making a decision and, and coming to an ending on that, on those issues. He was just, he was just good at that. And I, I know some of you knew him and I wanted to remind you of, of Dave because when I got the tie this morning, it reminded me. I don't have any new ideas today, but I do have an old one.
Well, at least you're direct.
Going back to the start, the, the problems were, there were three problems that we were trying to deal with at the very beginning of this. First and foremost was the under, underpopulation of Districts Three and Four and the arm that came into Gold River for District Four. So there, there, our draft maps tried to solve the District Three issue very quickly by adding unincorporated community Gold River to District Three, takes care of that problem. Then that increases the District Four problem by about 9,000, 8,000, 9,000 people. So in, in rough numbers, Four would need to have 40,000 people at that point. There's only three ways to do it. Number one, move west, take in the communities of Del Paso Heights and the areas to the west of the airport. That would move District One south, probably to Fruit Ridge, Little Pocket, maybe more, probably not much more. And then District Two would have to move south, perhaps going into the city of Elk Grove for 40,000. Second option is taking, adding 40,000 folks from the top of District Three to District Four, which we discovered last night is Foothill Farms. Then Four, I mean Three, would have to move into Rancho Cordova for an additional 40,000 people. The, the third way is the way we have it in Map 204, which was a draft map for your consideration. And that is doing, doing the Gold River thing and then moving Four onto the eastern side of Rancho Cordova and keeping Rancho Marietta in District Four, which is what they have said they want. So I give you the, the options and we can proceed from there.
So I appreciate your overview and I think I'd like to make some opening comments. I've been awake half the night thinking about this and, and I think, I don't know if this is something that would work for Supervisor Desmond and everyone concerned, but I, I have some thoughts around some of the conversation that we had last night. One of the things that Supervisor Desmond, you had stated is that you were concerned about breaking up communities, which I completely respect and I think all of us are, are in that, in that frame of mind. And, and I, I just had a thought around the fact that this, this map actually gave me a large portion of Carmichael. I think the amount of Carmichael that I have now is 11,552 people, which is kind of your, it's the heart of you, which is where you live and everything, right? So if we gave Carmichael, if we put Carmichael, all of Carmichael back into District Three, take it from District Four, that would increase the deficit in District Four. But your concern about breaking up Foothill Farms or North Highlands, we could then take all of Foothill Farms and put that in District Four and then to top off and finish the, the solution, I'm thinking take Mather and put it into District Three. And if you did that, this is, maybe you can pass this down to Doug. That's a map that shows, that map shows what it looks like to just move Mather, not residential, but just the Mather into District Three. It keeps Foothill Farms whole. It makes Carmichael whole.
Is this building off of the map from last night where we left it?
You know, we were just having, I know you took Foothill Farms back, so I, I don't know if you're, you're okay with this. I'm just saying this would solve the problem of Rancho Cordova really wants to be in District Five and Three, so it would, it would keep them there. It would keep Rancho Marietta with Frost in District Four. It would give you, it would make Carmichael whole, which I totally in District Three. And it would keep Foothill Farms whole and Foothill Farms actually has some commonality in that our P bid, our Antelope P bid is it runs into Foothill Farms. So they have some economic, community and economic development commonality. And then there is still, if there was more needed, that little notch of Fair Oaks. Fair Oaks, that, just that little square notch of Fair Oaks could go into District Four if you needed a couple more. The numbers are here. I should have passed, I, I don't have an extra copy. I wish I did.
I can do it.
If you can copy that for everyone, those are some, how the numbers stack out. It gets us pretty close. I know you have to give up something, but you get Mather, which is a really great economic hub and, okay, so, and she'll get copies of the numbers to, to show you that. And then I, I'm going to go to Supervisor Serna next.
Okay, thank you.
Unless Doug has questions about that.
You described it very clearly. We could, we could check it out, but.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to Doug in terms of his opening comments about there being three ways to do it. I guess I would respectfully disagree. I think there's more than three ways because quite frankly, we have not had much discussion at all about really future growth and how that really comes into play here. So I think it's something we should exhaust a conversation about today in terms of this last difficult part. And, you know, I think with the Alberta specific plan, with Easton, Cordova Hills, and south of Folsom, all of which are, you know, arguably relatively much more entitled than some other growth areas or closer to development and therefore likely population growth in the, in the next 10 years. I think that's something we, we should add to our list of topics this, this afternoon.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, and I'm just looking at the, the numbers here. First, I want to just preface it by saying, you know, it, obviously we're still struggling with this because we have, we care very much about our districts, right? And we don't want, we want to do what's best for our districts and the folks we represent. So from that perspective, I just have a tremendous amount of respect for, for all of my colleagues up here on the dais and I'm, you know, honored to be up here and among them. I think that, you know, I, I mentioned this before, I mean, my, my, my first preference is, would be Map 204 with the, the changes suggested by, by Supervisor Serna and incorporating those. But certainly out of, out of deference and respect to our friends in Rancho Cordova and certainly my senior member of the board here, Supervisor Natoli, I, I think he might have some ideas on a, on a different approach, which, which I'd certainly love to, to see. And then after we see that, I have some ideas as well if we want to work within the framework of kind of the map that we started looking at last night, dividing up Rancho Cordova between Three and Five. I will, I do have one question for you, Doug. I'm just, I'm curious, was there, you know, I, I went back again and read the letter from Rancho Cordova. Did they have a, I mean, and I saw, I think it was a proposed map and I know we kind of swapped it between Three and Five. Did they say anything specific about, you know, any rationale behind not wanting to be, have that area in District Four instead of District Three? Was there, I, I don't know and I didn't, I didn't watch the meeting. I don't know if there was any kind of justification in terms of keeping communities of interest together, things like that.
The, the council discussed that. It did not appear in the letter that I read this morning. A council person suggested that they don't have a lot to, in common with Folsom and, and that area.
Okay.
But another councilwoman pointed out that, yeah, we do, we're, we're in the same school district. So obviously it goes both ways. And as you saw, the vote was three to two, so I don't think they, there was agreement on the council as to what the, what they should do except the Three prevailed over the Two. And that's how we got the letter. Does that answer your question?
No, that, I mean, that's helpful. I, and, because I was thinking about that last night. I don't know if any of you have seen the, the show Queen's Gambit?
Yep.
Have you seen that? So, you know, she looks up at the ceiling, sees the chess pieces moving. That's what I was doing last night, seeing pieces of a map moving. I probably wasn't the only one either doing that, but no, that, that's helpful because it did occur to me as like, you know, that Rancho Cordova is, is in the same school district as, as some other parts of District Four. I mean, I think Rancho Cordova, obviously their, their number one preference would certainly be to keep themselves entirely within District Five. And so, you know, I, I will defer to Supervisor Natoli and see if he had any additional ideas that might help us get there. And if, and if not, if we, if we want to keep pursuing this as a split between Five and Three, I have some other ideas for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate the comments of my colleagues this afternoon. I, just, just before session, I wanted to be sure I understood kind of where we left off last night, so I'd asked Doug and, and obviously the map that he put up, put up there. Not unlike all of you and I'm sure many folks who have observed, you know, a lot of thoughts went through my head about how we might address this and certainly keeping in mind the testimony we had yesterday. But a couple of thoughts I had, and I think both Supervisors Frost and Desmond have introduced or reintroduced, you know, where we had gone with some of the conversation for quite a while. Last evening, that was having the District Three, which would, under one scenario include Gold River and then take in the area east of Sunrise, basically that, that portion of the city of Rancho Cordova. I see what Supervisor Frost has put forward and that's, I think, introduced into the conversation, some, you know, different elements and Supervisor Desmond, obviously we'll speak to those as we go on with the conversation. Two thoughts occurred to me is kind of where we had left off with, with the struggle of trying to keep, you know, largely the city of Rancho Cordova or all of it within District Five and the overage and underage. And so a, a couple of thoughts occurred to me. One, I think where we left it, we were at, and correct me, Doug, we were about 9.9%. This District Four was under and D5 was over about 5.6 or 8.
You're, you're exactly correct.
Okay.
In the current, where we left it last night.
Right, right. And then the others were fairly close to being right on spot, Districts One and Two and, and Three.
Right.
And so what occurred to me just in that scenario, and again, two things I wanted to introduce, one of them's not old, but then there was thoughts about with the map, working out the, the map that we left with, Gold River, which has about 8,500. And I know that Supervisor Desmond expressed desire to represent the area, obviously Supervisor Frost did too, but if we weren't going to come across the, the river or the freeway and take it into Rancho Cordova with District Three, that, that's one way to bring additional, and again, I, I know you spoke to the thing about the arm for, for Gold River, but it's currently in District Four. So that was one thought that occurred to me, again, not novel. And the only other piece that, that came to mind, at least up on this northern end, was there's a piece that came to mind, at least up on this northern end, was there's a small segment, about 1,885 residents, where Watt, Folsom, Highway 50 come together. And the thought there was, is that District 3 runs that whole course along there, and that would be a way to move about 2,000 people from D5 to D3. And again, I'm not presuming anybody agrees with that, but it would be a way to reduce the overage. And then, I guess, the last thought, I just wanted, and it goes to what Supervisor Serna said, and I know you've given us wise counsel about staying within the 10%, but the aspects of growth, because this configuration that you show on the map right now with D4 includes the Cordova Hills, and I'm going to just state the numbers, 8,000 units. Easton and Glenboro with, combined about 48, almost 4,900 approved units. And then the Alberta specific plan, which has 5,800 units. And then, not including south of Folsom, but if I did the math correctly, just with what I recited there, about 18,700 units, many of which are not just planned, but they're entitled. And again, I know we've got to meet these percentages, but there is potential, under the map that you currently have up there, for significant growth within an area that shows the underage, at least with the current census data. So, I do think, as Supervisor Serna says, that could help maybe bring some focus to what our conversation is today, knowing that we can account for, but we still have to meet those margins. So I wanted to point those out. But my two suggestions were that, and maybe we need to talk about where Supervisors Frost and Desmond have been, looking at some potential adjustments, and how that might work for the communities that are represented there. But I think that the one area in D5 that has some commonality with, is where D3 and D5 meet, right at the Watt Avenue 50, Folsom, American River area, might be an area where a couple thousand folks could be adjusted, if we needed to try to shave the margin on the D5 side. So, that's all I have right now.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Natoli, I got your second, your last two points. The first one regarding Gold River, I wasn't clear. Were you suggesting it should be in a district, or which one were you suggesting?
Well, if you're trying to meet underages and overages, that, to what you said, kind of on the simple side of this, that, again, I think certainly Supervisor Desmond's expressed a desire to have that coming to District 3. It currently resides in District 4, and if District 3 were not going to come south of 50, then one way to adjust that, again, I don't know what does the rest of the numbers, would be have Gold River be retained in District 4. So that was the thought I had. So, again, I throw those out as ideas, and I've heard some other ideas that may help us get there quicker than anything that might come about what I suggested, so.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, let's see what Supervisor Kennedy will say next.
I think I just wanted to comment on one thing that was said about Rancho Cordova, and saying, you know, pointing out that one of the council members did mention that there's one school district that represents both. Having been a graduate of that school district, I know it well. And there's also, if you look at the new growth, the new growth out there actually has a lot more in common with Folsom than it does with District 3 even. So, I don't understand the reasoning for why it is that Rancho Cordova wants so badly not to be in District 4. It puzzles me.
If we take into account the new growth, and, I mean, how close does that get us? Or can we take that new growth into account?
We can take it into account ephemerally. In other words, we know that there are approved projects, as Mr. Natoli says, but they don't exist. That's, right now, they are zeros on the map. So, when you count up your districts, as you draw them today, or when we end the process, you want to be absolutely sure that when you add up your pluses and minuses, it's less than 10%. I also advise, since we're an urban county, that we not go too far past the 2 or 3 percentage range. Because people could say, well, 1% is...
317,000?
3,000 people, is my math wrong? 1% of a district off is 3,000 people. So, if it's 3% off, then that's almost 9,000 people. So someone could say, well, perhaps this is not equal representation, which is what, if we go back to the 1950s redistricting was all about. So, I cautioned you at the very beginning on that, but Mr. Natoli is correct. You can take it into consideration, but you have to realize that the people that you're talking about are not there. And so, your pluses and minuses are going to be on your sheet, and then people will judge you based on that.
Just to add one point too, when we talk about that in the criteria, planned growth is a justification for, you know, with the limitations I was mentioning, it's a justification within the 10%. If you go beyond 10%, then it's what they call presumed unconstitutional. The per n a prue then changes in court, and your map has to be the best possible map out there, and any better map would then beat you in court. So definitely, when you're talking about presumed growth or expected growth, it's a good justification for being, you know, a larger deviation, but you still have to be within 10%.
Right.
Madam Chair, guys, one other comment.
Yeah, please.
Was I neglected to, just on what you circulated, I do think, the discussion, if we focus in on what you proposed, and what Supervisor Desmond responded to, I want to have a conversation around Mather. That is inhabited. There's about 4,000-plus residents in Independence of Mather, and plus those who were sat down on the community campus and so forth. So, if we get a serious focus on that map, I want to say that I think Mather should be in play in that conversation, which I'm sure it will be. But, that's all I had to add.
You mean, in play to go to...
To be retained in D5. But, you know, again, if we're talking about trying to get numbers with, you know, with D3, if we're going that direction, I'm certainly willing to entertain that. But at this point in time, I think it should retain in D5, if Cordova stays in large part, the older part of Cordova stays there. So, we can take a look at the numbers. But, I don't know how we get to begin to then juggle some of this, but I'm interested to see how some of those numbers come out.
And I don't think North Highlands, I think North Highlands is possible to go to D4, but I think you feel the same way, or do you feel the same way about North Highlands as you do about Foothill Farms? Because I don't think North Highlands fixes it like Foothill Farms does. It's such a clean line with Foothill Farms. But, I think there was a path with North Highlands.
Right.
But I think there's more adjustments needed after North Highlands.
I think, you know, I will say this, is that I, and I, you know, I talked about it yesterday when we were thinking about breaking up Foothill Farms. I mean, my first priority is certainly to keep the communities of similar interest together. There certainly is, to me, a lot of appeal in, you know, bringing Carmichael together into one district. And maybe we could just, I don't know. I mean, I feel like we better start plugging some numbers in and plug in some things. I mean, that might be, so I can just start with an idea that I had, Doug. Maybe we could, if we pull up, could we pull up the map where we left off yesterday?
Certainly. If the staff behind the scenes can cooperate, we'll put it on the screen.
Is that the map that goes with? Thank you.
But you got to get that undo button working, Doug, because, you know, I suspect we're...
Get your fingers, get those fingers rolling.
What you see is where we left off last night.
Okay. So, and again, just for, oops, I just lost the screen.
Thank you. I was going to ask you for that.
Something that I was just toying around with, if we were going to keep this split, right, between 5 and 3, just would like to maybe explore some numbers here. What if we took all of, what if you took, and again, this is something I don't like to do, but I think it's something at this point we need to explore. What if you took all of North Highlands and put it in District 4?
All right.
What would that do for the numbers? And it's certainly a community that's near and dear to my heart, but I think if it's kept whole in a neighboring district...
As whole as it can be, because part of it is still...
Well, it's a funky, I mean, North Highlands and Foothill Farms are both a little bit, are both a little bit funky in their boundaries, right?
Yeah.
North Highlands is 42,700 people.
Okay. And then, if you made that swap with Carmichael, put all of Carmichael whole into District 3, what if you did both of those things, what would that look like? And I hope you don't mind indulging me here, but...
No, I'm fine.
We'll see how it works.
I'm trying to make it work. I'm open.
Okay, I see it, and...
That's the Carmichael line, you see that?
We'll have to count it up here, just a moment.
Okay.
That is a big chunk of Carmichael.
I think it's about 11,000 people.
It's 11,552. I wish I could, wish I had a magnifying glass. I can't see the streets, but is that Dewey where that, that's probably Dewey that it did on the right?
Coil is the one that goes right through it?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Almost there. It's 11,000 folks.
Okay. Does it go up a little further north?
Yeah, it looks like it does.
Oh, yes, you're right. Doug, let's hire Serna.
So 11...
11,471, yes.
There might be one additional one somewhere. Okay. And then, so what if you, now, can you, can you hit go on this one, and then do the same thing over in North Highlands?
Did you get the whole thing, Doug?
Okay, give it to 4, right?
Is there something missing at the very top?
There's 100 people somewhere missing, I think, but, I mean, it's close enough.
Well, let's see if there's any holes when we hit it.
There's something at the very top. Oh, well, maybe, that's weird. Yeah, that right there.
Just to straighten out the line? All right.
Is that Carmichael?
I think it's, yeah, it is.
Yeah, that fixes it.
Here, I'll pull it up.
There's 200 folks there.
Okay.
Actually, that is, those last three blocks that I just added, those are in Citrus Heights.
Oh.
So, clean that up, whatever.
Perhaps they're your friends who want their zip code changed.
They could be. You've heard of them, huh? That's a longtime problem.
So anyway, on the, you're now 13,000 over, Mr. Desmond?
Right, so now you'd have to go over to North Highlands.
Short by 40,000.
Right.
So you want to do the North Highlands switch?
Yeah, plug that in. I mean, you know, I mean, the way I think about it, we're remedying, you know, one community being broken up, and we're, North Highlands moving it, but at least keeping it together. So I just wanted to explore the numbers, see if we can make it work for population purposes.
All right, let's see if I can do the quick way here.
Doug, you're working from the map where we left it last night, correct? So that, when you say District 3 is over now with that adjustment by 13,000, that includes the shift that you made between 1 and 3 relative to Campus Commons and Sac State, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay. Let's see, who has North Highlands now?
Well, 3 is going to come up needing after this.
Okay, I'm going to target 4. Oops, from 3. Let's see if this does. Nope, it's just doing blocks. Oh, here we go. Draw one. There it is.
You can't just plug in a zip code, huh? It's 95660.
I'm using the Census's CDP, and let's see if this works. Yep, it did. Let me pan out to make sure that we're contiguous here. Okay, the change we're making now is 48,000. And if you look at the map, you'll see that there's a tiny little corridor going from Carmichael that keeps Foothill Farms in your district. And the red area is 48,000 people, and that's the portion of North Highlands that's in your district that we are now assigning to 4. Ready to go?
Yep.
All right, here we go. Hold there. Oh, guess what I forgot to do?
What?
Insider, insider stuff, sorry.
How come there were 48,000? I thought there were less in North Highlands. That's going to make it even more of a delta.
All right, I have to wait for my computer to stop syncing, and that's a technical term, and I apologize. Just learned it myself this year. There you go.
So how does that look for the deviation now?
3 is under by 35,000, and 4 is over by 5,000.
Do you already have Gold River in 3?
Gold River's in 3, and there's a significant portion of Rancho Cordova currently in 3.
So, does this include putting that La Riviera area back in District 3, down the southern part of...
Okay, if you look at the map, where I have the hand right now, that's La Riviera, it's currently in 5. I heard that described as the portion that's in the Folsom School District. And the portion of La Riviera that I have the hand on now is in the city of Sacramento, and that is currently in 3.
How much was 3 over, or what were the numbers again for 3 and 4?
3 is currently under by 35,000 people, and 4 is over by 5,000, which is less than 2%.
So 4 is, so that part of La Riviera, I'm sorry.
Anyway, I will do that now if you'd like.
Right, is that right?
I think you might be getting close. We may not be here till midnight.
No, don't jinx us. Looks to me like, like it's in 5. See this over here? Supposed to do it by block.
Just for the record, La Riviera is in Sac City Unified.
Right, that area I have right now, yeah, it's in the, I think that's probably the justification to put it in District 3 because it's the same.
It's not Folsom.
School district, right.
Okay, we've picked up 7,000 folks here. You want to put them into District 3?
Yes.
Yes, there's where they're in right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh-oh. What's going on here?
Sorry, that was my fault. I was trying to get to this screen, sorry about that.
Trying to give us a heart attack, Phil?
Yes, I am, I'm sorry.
Get it up.
Do you want to?
Can I keep, keep going? I have a couple.
Yeah, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, okay.
Any, any, want me to keep going? I had a couple ideas.
Keep going, we're, we're listening to you.
So I was wondering, so Supervisor Serna, what do you think about the area north of the river over there? If I take that back into District 3, again, just to bring the deviation down a little bit?
The Campus Commons?
Yeah, yeah, not Sac State, the north, north part of the river. So what if you put that back in, Doug? That area on the north or southwest corner, right there, yeah, the area north of the river?
Campus Commons.
Right.
Did that used to be in 3?
It's in 3 now.
In 3 now.
Ooh, this whole area here?
Yeah, everything north of the river, right.
All right. Into 3 from, I think it's in, currently in 1.
Nope. No, no.
No, no, no.
North of the river.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, I'll just close this, reject. You guys are getting good at your geography here.
No.
No, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh darn it, all right.
A river runs through it, Doug.
All right.
Does he need to get rid of a few because he could give me back, that he has 2,300 in Orange Vale that would make Orange Vale whole for District 4? It's only 2,300 people. I don't know if that makes it worse, but.
Let's see how this, how this looks.
Okay, I found 5,000 folks for you.
Yep, hit go.
Hit go.
Hit it.
All right. 3 is now 22, 23,000 under, which is 7.2%. And let's look at 1 real quick. 1 is now 7,000 over, which is 2.2%.
How about the rest of them?
How about 5?
3 is way under. How, how much is 3 under?
22,000, almost 23,000 people.
So if you, if you, if you zoom out a little, Doug, I'm just, what if, and again, I was just, and I'll defer, this will all defer to Supervisor Natoli, what if we messed with the east side of Rancho Cordova and pushed District 3 out further that way? It may not put, may not pull in much in terms of population, but it would be in the growth area.
So, so you're talking about east of the green-yellow boundary there?
Yeah, yeah.
To the east and westboro area, you could, you know, as long as you.
What I called Aerojet last night.
Yeah, I, I think you could, you could use an extension of what, of what would be, what will be Hazel, I mean, for, for District 3.
And that would be contiguous.
Yeah.
Right, can we look at that anyway? What do you think?
Yeah, I, no, that's fine, yeah, because it's coming out of District 5 anyway. I mean, under this scenario, it's, you know, it's in District 4, and there's not a whole lot of residents there, but I think it would be logical up that corridor going to the.
Is that Aerojet?
Yeah, Aerojet, East and Glenboro.
Yeah, there's Aerojet Road right in the middle of it.
Yeah, some of you use Aerojet Road as a freeway off ram.
You want to experiment with that a little bit?
Yeah.
You have East and Place, which is going to be a high, you know, high-density development right at the light rail station.
It's going to be beautiful.
In the next 10 years?
Probably 20.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Close to utilities, I don't know, next year, I would think so, if they're going to start somewhere, I would think Patrick's probably going to start.
Half a season's long.
Yeah, take it up to the Folsom city limits line, yep.
But.
Should be, if you go a little further to the east there, I think you're, you're maybe looking at it.
Not a lot of population, but there will be.
Can you see on that map where the Folsom line is, Doug?
It's a little further to the east, it's covered up by that legend. I think it's right in there, Sue.
Is it possible there's only 3 people there?
No.
You'd be right.
Only 3 people. It could still include its future growth though, if you were under, I guess, you could, you know.
Uh-oh.
There's the Folsom line right there, yeah.
Okay, the Folsom line goes like that, right along the freeway, but, right there, that's the auto mall. So my question is.
That's Folsom.
Yeah, the, it's Folsom Boulevard.
Thin, thin red line, yeah, the thin red line's the Folsom city limits, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
So south of that.
I think Hazel is the defining line.
The auto mall's not in the county.
No, it's not.
The auto mall is not in the county.
But El Grove Honda, I mean.
It's in, it's in the city of Folsom.
Folsom Honda is there.
All right, I just wanted to be sure.
Folsom Honda's in, Folsom Lake Honda's in the county.
Hondas are in, Fords are out.
Yeah, Ford, yep, Folsom Lake Ford's in the city. We do have a tax sharing agreement with them though, still.
Okay, I'm adding to 3, source is 4. I'm not finding any people. The Census doesn't believe there's people there.
Yeah, that's a growth area.
Yep. So there are houses on all these streets?
No.
No, it will be.
There will be.
There will be.
It's all future growth. It's zero now?
Well, it's business and growth, Aerojet is, got some exciting things coming out.
My, my, my thought just on this was, if that is included, then that helps us explain the deviation a little more, because it's growth. I mean, that's just what I was.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, I was just surprised that there were no people, but I'm not familiar, so my fault.
And then you have a wedge in there, looks like of county area below White Rock, down to the Rancho city limits line there, so I don't know how you want to.
Yeah.
Might want to line that up, yeah, right there, yeah, well, I don't know if you're going that far out.
No problem.
That'd be fine.
White Rock is unincorporated there.
Yeah, right along there, yeah.
3 people. Wow.
More cows than people.
Yeah.
Dave and I were driving up in Susanville one day, and we, I commented on, there were a lot of cows out there. And he said, yep, we prefer them.
Sounds like Dave. What about right up to Highway 50 there, using, along the creek?
Okay, one more, yeah.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, there you go, and one little spot there.
Oh, that gave a little bit of people.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a mobile home park there and a couple other.
Yeah, we, we found 176 people, Supervisor. Is this a go or not?
Yeah, fine.
Hit it.
Hit it.
Now what are you looking at?
What's the deviation now? D5 is still.
I can't, I didn't receive a D5 number, what's the number for D5?
That's, can you scroll, Doug, see at the top, we can't see what D5's numbers are?
All right, uh, let's see. 5 would be, is over by 11,000 in this so far, and then 3 is still under by 22.
So I have one other suggestion, it's only about 1,800 folks, but if you want to go back down to, to the La Riviera area.
La Riviera.
Rich, was that the totality of some of the changes?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was, so I, and I, this was my thought, thanks for indulging me, and I figured, this is close, maybe we.
Can nibble around the edges a little bit.
So there's the triangle right in the middle of your map there, just where's, where the Highway 50 insignia is there, Doug? Wherever's, yeah, you just come down a little bit, come down where the Highway 50, yeah. That triangle on there, Cal Center Drive, Folsom Boulevard, Watt.
Yeah, it says here, it's Tech Center Drive.
Yeah, yeah, Tech Center Drive. Yeah, that area there, just that triangle.
From 5?
And again, would look to, to District 3, Rich.
No, other triangle.
No, no, wrong triangle, no, no, got to go, go back to where the Highway 50 sign is, Doug.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
There you go, yeah, there you go, that one.
That's all business, right?
No, no, there's four plexes and apartments and some single-family, some duplexes. About 1,800 people there.
You're right, it's 1,800.
Okay.
You know another thing Dave Cox said? Don Natoli knows where everybody is buried in that district.
Someday I'll be buried there too.
1,800, Mr. Desmond?
Rich, would you push a go?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, okay. There's some blocks we need to add here, just a second. The freeway is blocked, the Census Bureau makes freeway sections into blocks.
Is that for highway funding?
I don't know why they do it. All right.
Okay, now what do your numbers look like?
Where does that put 3 in 5 now?
Let's see, 3 is under by 21,000, 5 is over by 9,000.
Well within 10%, right?
Let's see, 2.9 for 5.
Yeah.
3 is 6.5.
Barely.
As it stands.
Within the margin of error.
6 and 1/2 plus, I'm looking at, trying to find 4 here. 1.6, 6 and 1/2. Yeah, you're under, this is about 9.5 deviation, total deviation.
So it didn't get us anywhere, I mean.
Yeah, it did.
You're within the margin.
Within the margin.
And you have growth areas in both 4 and 3, and 1, and 5, and 2.
Does it, does it work?
So does this mean, does this map show Rancho and, a portion of Rancho in 3 then?
Yes.
Okay, just want to be clear.
So, so the portion of District 3 that includes Rancho is from Sunrise, east to their city limits, and then on over to the Aerojet, is that right, Doug?
Yes.
And Gold River remains in District, I mean, goes into District 3, right?
You don't have to, you don't have to switch Mather.
No, no.
Are you happy with that?
There, there's no population south of White Rock down there, right, Don?
Uh, where are you looking at?
South of the area we took in, I mean, I'm just, I was just.
No, no, no.
It's country.
Yeah, you got your, some, some mining operations and obviously some of the Aerojet property that, and there's some future development, I think, over time Rancho Cordova will come out towards, well, they've already started some of the Elliott development there along White Rock, but not right at that location.
Could, could I, Doug, would you mind going up? Some, my staff just, it's something I overlooked, if, I think in the North Highlands thing, we, we took part of Foothill Farms out.
No, we put it back last night, I think.
No, we did, I, I know, but I think there's, is there an area that's east of I-?
That's the area that's contiguous to the P-Bid.
This, no, go south.
Let me quickly try to find Foothill Farms.
There might be a little sliver there, Sue, I think that could be Foothill Farm, I'm not sure.
Are you saying that still ended up, it left in 4?
Yeah, in the North Highlands, I.
According to my map, Foothill Farms is entirely in District 3 in, in this iteration.
Got it, okay, okay. Well.
Was there an Orange Vale piece you mentioned?
Oh, yeah.
But then, I don't think District 3, District 3 can't stand to lose very much, I don't think.
Right.
There's about 2,300 in Orange Vale, and there's a couple blocks in Fair Oaks that are in District 4, that's a couple hundred people, I don't know if you want to clean that up.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Maybe it'll even out if we.
Yeah, it might even out.
Okay, so there's about, I think, a small portion of Orange Vale in District 3 that could go make Orange Vale whole in District 4, and there's a couple blocks of Fair Oaks, a couple hundred people in District 4 that could make Fair Oaks whole with Supervisor of District 3. But I don't know if that makes his numbers worse, that gives him a couple more, so actually.
Right.
No, that gives me 2,300 and you a couple hundred, so it, it might make it worse.
I, I found the area of Orange Vale that is in District 3. It's right here.
Yeah.
What would you like to do?
Well, it'd be nice to have it whole in District 4, and then take whatever is Fair Oaks in District 3 and make it whole in District 3.
All right, we'll do Orange Vale first.
I mean, do you feel that way?
All right, if we can clean up the communities of interest, I think that's.
Seems like a good thing.
I think that's a good thing.
All right, this is 2, 4. All right, this is 2-4.
And we put all of Rio Linda and Alberta in District 4, right, Doug? I think we did.
I have to remember. Yes, we, we fixed the Rio Linda thing last night, but we can check. Okay, this takes 2,200 people from four, I mean from three and gives it to four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now our deviation is greater than 10%, though.
Yes, it is.
Okay, but you're going to add some back into Fair Oaks?
Yeah. I don't know if it'll be enough, but there might be some other cleanup. Well, there's no cleanup by Foothill Farms. Let's see, where else would there be cleanup?
New Fair Oaks, we'll see.
Okay, there's a portion of...
Where is it, Sue? Where's, oh, right.
It seems like I had like a couple blocks and it just doesn't seem... Cool. It doesn't seem nice because, you know, you don't even have a neighborhood watch that gathers in, in a few blocks.
Okay, I've highlighted a portion of Fair Oaks that is in District 4 at the moment. Would you like it in District 3?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yes.
So if, what if we went down to Jackson Highway, all the way down there, would that pick up any population down there?
I think you did, didn't you?
I didn't think I went that far. I think we went down to White Rock.
Oh, well, yeah, you could...
East of the city, you know what I mean?
Oh, I see. Uh, no, you're not going to pick up any population.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Well, we bring the map back, I will take a look at it.
What is that, the area that's just west of the landfill?
Yeah, yeah. If you took, he's already got Grant Line, so we'll, we'll just go and take a look at it and see. There's some potential growth in there, I think.
Well, there's some population there, Sue.
Oh, you might pick up some.
There's a, there's a, there's a mobile home park in Rancho Cordova that I, I had Gold River and I had a, I have a mobile home park in my district, and that is the only part of Rancho Cordova that I have, is one mobile home park.
You mean currently?
Currently, I, I don't know if it's drawn into District 4 on this map. You, you took Gold River, but did you?
If, if we know where it is, we can look.
Yeah.
Country, country, country mobile states on either side of the...
It doesn't make sense for that to be in District 4, really. That could go in District 3.
Oh, yeah, would, yeah, otherwise.
Along with Gold River.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's...
Is this all of it, Doug?
This is the portion of Fair Oaks that's in four currently, and I, we're almost ready to send it to three.
Do it.
Do it.
And that's all of Fair Oaks in District 3 now?
That is correct.
That improves the deviation.
That's good.
Yeah. You want to look at that mobile home park now?
Yeah, let's do that, because that's right adjacent to Gold River.
Now, that wasn't D5 up until the last redistricting.
You know where I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's where Citrus Road, Sunrise come together, there just nowhere to Coloma.
Quite a few people in that park.
Hold on.
So it'd be Sunrise south of the river, north, just south of Coloma Road.
We just made a mistake. What I just did is give you that Orangevale piece in District 3. See this brown line?
Oh.
That's the Fair Oaks line?
Oh, yeah, no, that goes in District 4. Yeah, yeah, that goes in District 3. I mean, that goes in four.
Yeah, um, where's the Fair Oaks piece that we thought was in?
Um, I think it's over by the notch.
Up there?
Somewhere around there.
There's another Fair Oaks line. All right, let's try that again. I want to go this way.
Well, we know right now we're within the deviation. We can...
My staff will know. Let's see.
All right. That thing we just did, I'm undoing, so that Orangevale is whole in four.
Thank you.
No.
You just redid it.
You just?
I just redid it. That's right, I'm supposed to hit the X, you big dummy.
Those folks should be awfully confused, they've been back and forth in two districts, six times in the last two minutes. Yeah.
Red button, Doug.
So with this, why not do the X? So there you go.
There you go.
There you go.
That's it.
The...
I don't know where that Fair Oaks area is.
It, it's, um, just to the east of the notch, if it's still in District 3, it might have already been written out of District... I mean, in District 4, it might have been written out on this map already.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see it.
I'm told the, the bold should go east of Almond Avenue. I'm having trouble seeing the...
So Almond Avenue is one block east of the current boundary there, Doug. It's a, it's a north-south roadway, right? Greenback and Almond.
Can't see, I can't see the streets.
Okay, I've highlighted Fair Oaks, and I'm going to look for a part of Fair Oaks that's not in 3. All of Fair Oaks is currently in 3, at least what the Census Bureau calls Fair Oaks.
Got it.
Okay.
What about the mobile home park? Did you want to look at that?
Yeah, that's got a lot of people, I think.
Well, yeah, because it has to go to 5 or 3, you can't, 4 wouldn't have any connectivity to it, right?
Oh, with Gold, Gold River out of the picture?
Yeah, it seems like it makes sense to go in 5 or 3.
Yeah, because Gold River is going to 3, right?
I'm just not sure where it is, Sue. You want to tell Doug where it is?
Yeah, come, sunrise, um, sunrise of Coloma Road.
Sunrise and Coloma.
Southeast corner.
Is that right? When you're kidding, yeah.
The red line on the, my left is Sunrise.
All right, keep coming down, where's Coloma?
Is Coloma south of here?
No, it's right. Okay.
Right off of Sunrise.
It's north of 50.
Yeah, it's north of 50, where you, where you saw the deviation, little blotch in there, it's right.
Okay. Okay?
It's in already, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a tiny little piece of something there.
Yeah.
Already in?
That's, that is...
In 3.
In 3, already.
Is that the mobile home park you're talking about? Okay, where, where should we assign it?
3.
To 3.
Where it should be.
If it's in 3, it's where it should be.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's, in this drawing, it's in 3.
Okay.
It's already in 3?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, that's probably why it got written into 4, because it made sense the way the line went.
So do you want to look at the White Rock area, you said?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, maybe, going south from there. Don, what do you think?
Yeah, go up Grant Line to Aerojet, uh, coming south to Aerojet.
There's no houses out there, though.
No, not yet. Might clean up their line, though.
Okay, here's White Rock and there's Aerojet over there, Grant Line and White Rock is right here.
Okay, then I think that the part to the left, yeah, well, you are there, it looks like the map is kind of off-center from what the line is there, but that should go, go to District 3, I think, take Grant Line straight up.
This one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no folks, sorry.
Take that block and make that, just follow Grant Line Road.
Yeah, that cleans it up.
Yep. Cows.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm going to move, follow it up, make sure the line stays with Grant Line Road to the... Did I add anything or not? There was a zero in there?
There was a zero.
All the way down to Jackson Highway?
What are the numbers now?
Three is under by 23, and five is over by 92.
So we need to make some adjustments.
Yeah, we're over, uh, over 10% at this point.
Even Mather wouldn't, would Mather solve it?
I can't see the numbers on this chart. I, it doesn't, can you scroll up a little bit? I can't see. Just a little bit down, please.
Excuse me, Doug?
Yeah?
My, my staff is insisting that the Census Bureau, she's wrong about the, in the Foothill Farms area near, near American River College.
What would we do without our staff?
Can you?
So what are the deviations? I cannot see on my chart. I can see 1, 2, and 3. I can't see 4 or 5. Can you see them?
No, he hasn't scrolled down.
Scroll, yeah, sorry.
Mr. Natoli?
Yes.
For your information, Mather has 4,400 people in it.
Right, I said that earlier.
Mather wouldn't solve it, but it would bring it back a little bit.
There's a mess we have to clean up later. I'm sorry, where are we going next?
Well, his staff had a, a problem with the census. Does that change the numbers, Rich?
Yeah, I think it might change a little bit.
Can, can you?
Let's look at that.
Doug, can you just scroll down so we can see the deviation with 5 up top there?
Okay.
Thank you.
9,200 here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make the, there you go.
So you're going to pick up some more Foothill Farms, it sounds like, then Rich goes, go, give you that.
Real close. Okay, um, this Foothill Farms, there's North Highlands, goes around like this, and you recall a small part of North Highlands over here next to McClellan.
Can you go down a little bit, Doug? That area right there, east of...
They're saying that's Foothill Farms?
Part of it.
I'll see. Well, again, it's, it's up to you folks, because the Census Bureau says that, that's, that's North Highlands.
I think that's over by Hillsdale and, um, no?
Yeah, there's Auburn Boulevard there, College Oak, that's where I recall the college is.
That's by...
The Census Bureau thinks it's North Highlands, but we're Sacramento County, we can do whatever we want.
Well, College Oak, are you talking about American River College?
Mm-hmm.
They're saying that's North Highlands?
Yeah, the Census Bureau. Yeah.
Well, no, but you're, you're showing it as North Highlands in this map, right, Doug? Yeah, that's not, no, that's not North Highlands.
So make, so make an adjustment there. You might pick up...
Yeah, that's not how, that's not how the people know it, I don't think.
That's what you get when you Google it. That's North Highlands.
Right.
Madison Avenue?
Yeah, that might fix the, that might fix the numbers. Um, there's a lot of people around that college.
So, shall we put the college in District 3?
Are you, are you just saying, put everything on that side of 80 is Foothill Farms? Yeah, just make the freeway the line?
And Madison Avenue is the south of, on the south?
Well, that is everything... I, I don't think of that as North Highlands at all. Or maybe, maybe, I don't know.
4,000 folks to be added to 3. To where?
Well...
Where shall I go? Any further?
To the edge of what you changed.
I think you go south more, I'm not sure, but... Is that?
Down to Myrtle?
Well, keep going, because that, that's the college.
Oh, the, the whole 80, I-80 part?
Yeah, that whole side is...
New problem.
What we know, what we've always known as Foothill Farms all our life. Yeah, they're right.
It's going to take a while if I do it this way.
I'm thinking everything on that side of the freeway, are you?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too. That's a good dividing line.
Mm-hmm. And that's how the community knows it also. This has got to, that's got to be good.
Does County Executive have any recommendation on this? It watches so intently, Ann.
12,000 folks to be added to 3. Do it. Do.
What does that do to 4 now?
3.5, 1.4, 2.9.
That, that doesn't ruin it for, the numbers for 4?
Quarter deviation, six and a half deviation.
You and I, 4 and 3 had both been under, but they're both in growth areas.
Yeah.
How much under are, are we? I mean, I, I know 3, but how much is, under is 4?
1.43%.
4,000.
4,000 people.
Well, that was quite a bit. Yeah, exactly. Just, we had to get, someone had to back us into a corner, I guess, before we figured it out.
If we can stick in that area, though, if you see the, the rest that, that we didn't move into 3, see that foot of 4 that the Census thinks is North Highlands, that's a really weird shape. Is that... Just to the west of where you're talking about there.
Dog.
So now that we moved the college side... So now that we moved the college side, the west side out, we have this... oops. See how 4 is coming down?
Why didn't... how did that?
That's west of the freeway that the Census considered North Highlands. I don't know if you also consider that North Highlands or not, but just see.
That's south of the college? I can't see the forest for the trees.
Bring it back in.
I thought we cleaned it up by doing everything on one side of the freeway to District 3.
Now there's a little arm that comes down from your district to take in what's North Highlands west of the freeway.
Can you show it again?
But not Foothill Farms.
Can you show me what it looks like? So I have one side and he has the other basically, and North Highlands is technically still split because it's, the census shows that as North Highlands. But I don't think the people live it that way.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I think you're good on the, you have a good record on east of the 80. It's a community of interest. Yeah, you now have this kind of lightning bolt piece of 4 coming down that, I don't know if that makes sense. If that's how the residents think of themselves as North Highlands, then we respect that, but I want to be sure.
Doug, since we're...
Does that way make sense to you?
Doug, since you're in that area and with the blessing of District 3 to just make consistent the boundary for District 1, can you, can we put Hagen Oaks back into 1? Does that make sense?
Tell me.
Yeah, it's in the city. There's no population. It's not gonna make... over here, Doug. The Hagen Oaks Golf Course.
Oh, okay.
So take that out of...
I know where that is.
Take that out of 3, put it in 1, please.
Okay.
And that's just to follow the city boundary. Not because I have a particular affection for that golf course or anything.
I have an affection for it. I think it's a good golf course. I didn't know it was in the city.
Flo, I got a text saying they're having a tough time viewing it on TV. Is it coming across okay? Do people are having a tough time seeing what we're doing on TV? I don't know if that's the case or not. Maybe that's past tense, but okay.
I'm having a tough time seeing it, so I'm sure they are.
Just the city boundary, just follow the city boundary. That's all.
Okay, that's what I've done.
No, you haven't.
Oh, this one one over here.
Nope.
No.
There you go.
But above it.
One more. There you go. Nope.
Is that it?
I think you have, if you can zoom in on that, you'll see there's a portion north of the freeway, I think that you got.
Right here?
Is that the city boundary? As long as it's following the city boundary, that's all. That's all I'm interested in.
There's the boundary right there.
Okay.
What else do we need to clean up?
I think I got it. Let's see how sinking is doing. Doesn't look right. Yeah, it's the freeway. Those freeway blocks again.
Are all the lines in yours, Don?
Well, I think we need to do a scan, go down, go along and take a look.
Since we're in a cleanup mode, there's something I needed to discuss with Mr. Kennedy, if I can show you here. I need to find it. Oh, this is it, right here. We somehow inadvertently gave a block of the city of Elk Grove to you. And we don't want to do that. This is for Courtney, your registrar voters. Let's not make her do a precinct for that, for that, separate precinct for that little thing. Okay, so I have to go from 5 to 2. I did that to Tulare County in an assembly plan once. So for 10 years, seven people in Tulare County were assigned to Fresno, a district in Fresno.
I bet you they love you.
I never apologized, Courtney. I'm sorry. I never apologized to the clerk down there or to the registrar.
I have a question when we have a free moment.
All right, sure.
On Rancho Marietta, do I have all of Rancho Marietta or are there... It crosses Jackson Highway.
Right.
And...
Previously, including the Mobile Home Park, should have been in D-4.
I just wonder if I have... do you know what I'm talking about, Don?
I do. And so what's the, the lines down there? Maybe you're...
It looks like there's a tiny block right here. Let's see if it's an actual block. It might be bigger than what we're talking about here.
There's a lot of new houses out there also.
Yeah, by the railies.
On the other side, but they're technically Rancho Marietta, right?
That's just, that follows a creek down there.
Yeah, no. I think it's, I think what she's talking about is where that red block is. Could you bring that up a little bit, Doug, please?
It's 16 people? What did you need, Mr. Nattoli?
I can't see the roads.
Yeah, so is that District 5 now or what?
Yes.
Well, the boundaries are fine now, right? There's no conflict.
I'll show you. The little red line is the current district boundary. The green line is what we drew yesterday.
Well, yeah, because the box...
It's Van Vliet Road. It goes right off of Jackson Highway.
Yeah, and that's south of Jackson Highway. That's not Rancho Marietta. That's the ranch.
Okay. Would you like that in 5 or 4?
I don't, is that Rancho Marietta?
No, it's down Van Vliet Ranch.
I'm talking about Rancho Marietta, the community on both sides of Jackson Highway. That's further down, further south.
Further west.
And probably more rural part of District 5, but there's... I just wanted to make sure.
There's Marietta Parkway. All that's in District 4. They're right there, Sue. There's Mobile Home Park. Where this cursor is, all that's in.
I think he's got it in. Does he, Don?
Yes, he does. Yeah.
Okay.
And the dotted line is currently in District 4, you said?
The little red, yes, is, that's the current line for District 4.
Oh, what is... What is that? Let's see.
But as I just pointed out, it...
I don't think there's anything there. I think it's...
Well, the block is huge, whereas the dotted line is small. And the block contains what Mr. Nattoli called the ranch, not Rancho Marietta.
My staff are saying Marietta's in and we're good. Is that what you see, Don?
Yeah, so I'd leave the line following the highway like you have it there, not that...
Yeah, I don't know where. I think that's the sheriff's substation or something.
It could be. So is there a way to kind of follow the boundaries to go, you know, at least those that were the north? You know, coming across the county right from there all the way across and see where 4, 3, 2, 1, and all?
Yeah.
Is there, Doug, is there a way to have a transparent shading assigned to each of the districts?
Yeah.
So we have different colors so that we can distinguish a lot better?
Okay. There are some, you know, little holes we need to clean up, but I'll let Doug do it.
Well, you've done good. You're 6%, 6 and... Oops.
Madam Chair, board members, can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Courtney Bailey Canales, registrar of voters. I just wanted to share that when it comes to the legal definition of the boundaries with the cities, which you all know, you know, we have all of that information and before you adopt your final maps, we will have our GIS teams go through and make sure there's no sliver mist or census, and if there is a census designated area that was weirdly carved, we'll bring it back to your attention.
Oh, that's great.
So just to let you know, we will be kind of proofing it on our side as well to make sure they meet our legal boundaries.
Can you, can you then, Courtney, please make note of the Foothill Farms, North Highlands, 80 split because as you heard, there's a census designated place that does not agree with the way it's been interpreted here. So I would hate for your staff to make the assumption that that was a mistake when it wasn't.
Yes, that is on my list and we will have our GIS team confirm that because obviously we want to make sure we have the right ballots for our voters. So I just wanted to share. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's not the prettiest color scheme, but that gives you good contrast there.
Yeah. Oh. What's that, that neck of, I always used to, I refer to the existing District 4 as the pterodactyl because it looks like a...
It used to be Florida. I'm not sure what it is now.
No, but because, you know, the head of the pterodactyl is Gold River there, but so if you look at the neck of the pterodactyl by the 50 insignia, is there still like the neck of the pterodactyl that should be in...
Yeah, that's the city of Folsom boundary.
I see, okay. Never mind.
What's that piece out there? Is that orange?
That's the Folsom Auto Mall.
No, 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 to the north, just at the top of the map. North, west, yeah. Yeah, right there. Was that the area you were trying to adjust earlier?
That was the Orange Vale area.
Yeah, Orange Vale. That was Orange Vale that had been in D-3.
Oh, yeah. Right. We wanted to make Orange Vale whole.
So, Don, did you want to go around the boundaries now?
Yeah, I'd like to see the boundaries. This is, the colors are certainly good, so maybe you can start wherever you want to start with the county and just kind of walk us through the whole county with this thing.
What's next?
Did you just ask what's next?
Yes.
Yeah, we wanted to walk the boundaries of every single district to just make sure we're all on the same page.
Which is what I do now, now that when I did that thing to Tulare, I learned my lesson. Since we're here at 4, shall we start with 4?
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll start at the Folsom city boundary here. Go south, Prairie City. Grant Line. 16 or Jackson Highway. County boundary. That's Folsom Lake right there, I believe. County boundary again. Through Antelope.
Wait. Can you go back? That, there was a sharp, no, go up and left or it's behind one of those blocks. It's the purple.
No, one click back.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Is that correct? The way that's, I guess it is. It's along a main thoroughfare.
Needed to be cleaned.
Let's have a look here.
Okay.
That might be, that might be some blocks we need to clean up, but we'll, I'll check later.
What are you talking about? The one I just went back to?
That purple line right there?
Oh.
Bring the map up, Doug, if you can, at that scale.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Keep on going. All right, right there. So it's following Antelope Road and Dewey, right? Is that right?
Antelope and Daly.
Daly. All right, yeah.
There's a block right there that we need to assign to, looks like 4.
Yep.
Not showing up.
To 4 or 3?
It's from 3, I think. Oops. Yeah, I can't pick up the block, so it might be all right. We'll check later. All right. Proceeding along the county line. There's the drainage canal.
Should be railroad tracks, right?
East Levy. It's the East Levy and the railroad tracks are right there, right?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
What would you like the boundary to be?
I think it's correct.
No, it's, I don't think it's changed at all, right?
All right, yeah.
Down to Ascot?
Ascot?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what this is here.
Oh, it's, keep on going. You'll see it's part of McClellan, I think.
Oh, this is the real end of peace right there.
That's just the McClellan.
Yeah.
What's that purple, though?
Oh, yeah, there we go. That doesn't look right, does it?
That's an island.
That's why we're doing this part of the program here.
That's why we're doing this part of the program.
Does that go with McClellan or with 4?
I think. It goes into 4.
Yeah, from 3 to 4.
Is the other part of McClellan?
Good.
Yeah?
What?
Is that blue part of McClellan?
Yeah, that's McClellan.
It goes up like that?
Yeah.
Yep. This is a tiny piece of North Highlands that's currently in 1, right there.
That's, what is...
That's Freedom, that's where you turn left to go to the aerospace.
Tua Avenue.
I think that should go to 4, just to be consistent.
Eases it a little bit.
Okay, this is the North Highlands area. Looks like these blocks here belong in 1 from 4. Let me make sure. It's the freeway.
Roosevelt Road.
Is the other side of Roosevelt Road Sacramento proper or that's just your district? That's always been your district? Is that correct?
No, it's, that's the city.
Okay.
All right.
You're gonna get a lot done there. You got three supervisors coming together.
It's, that's...
There's the city boundary. Going back up to 4.
Yellow spot at the tip of the... Yellow spot at the tip of the city.
Oh, there you go. For one.
Put it at District Five.
Kidding. No, I think it's three. It's not coming. Okay.
Oh, I see, okay. Because the lines don't match up, I guess.
Oh, it should be in the purple?
Yeah.
Well...
Give it a three.
It looks like, yeah, right, that, that's a problem.
There you go.
That's good.
Just, just want to make sure, so now we've got the, this is that North Highland thing we're talking about where four is coming down, and just want to be sure that this piece of North Highland actually is North Highland and belongs. Because it's an odd shape where four is coming down between one and three, so I just want to make sure that you're all agreeing that that actually is considered North Highland and is part of that community that belongs.
Or, is it Foothill Farms?
I will tell you, I bother...
It goes to Roseville Road.
If you Google North Highlands, it doesn't look like that.
Does, does Foothill Farms go to Roseville Road? That's the question.
Google North Highlands map.
Can we make it a little bigger? Well, it's Roseville Road right there.
You're right, Supervisor Serna, I mean, on the map, it shows American River College in North Highlands. I just don't think we, anybody's, I mean, certainly members of the community don't consider it that, you know?
As long as it's not a challengeable...
Right.
...issue, right?
Well, that, that's actually why I'm asking is, is, so I think you're good on the college side. You've talked about the record in the community and all that. Now the question is the west of the 80, south of, what is that, south of Palm?
Well, yeah, when you cross...
Is that considered North Highlands?
When you cross Madison, we've always called it Hillsdale, or, you know, it, it crossed into a different area. Foothill Farms was always on the other side of the freeway. To me, that's my personal growing up. Is that...
When I was, again, I know the story. Osie has a, Doug Osie, the former congressman, he has a North Highlands address. His, his house is around there somewhere. I know that. Mm-hmm. Because that's, if, if you drive through there, you'll see the horse properties on either side, and one of them is the Osies.
The, I think on the other side of the freeway is North Highlands, but north of that, you have it, Foothill Farms crossing the freeway, and I'm trying to remember. Maybe we can go north a little, go up a little and see... Yeah, right there, Rich. Oh, okay. Is that Foothill Farms? All the way on that side of the freeway?
Doug, if you plug in 95841 zip code, it takes in all of that area east of the freeway that we've, we've highlighted there.
I always thought of that side of the freeway as North Highlands, but...
East of the freeway?
Where his hand is.
Well, that's west, that's west.
You know better than I do. It's in your district.
That's 842 right there. 841 is down here, and I assume 841 goes over this way.
I think of Wallerga and all those areas on the other side of the freeway as North Highlands. Do you? Well, you, you, they have, it has Foothill Farms. I think of Foothill Farms on the Carmichael side of the freeway.
Yep, likewise. Yeah, 95841 is, is a Foothill Farms zip code, but, but Supervisor Serna is right. The map, when you pull up North Highlands, it's not consistent with that, so I don't know what, what the right approach is here.
It depends on what you're, you know, I can say that the P-Bid, can you go up a little bit? The P-Bid crosses into Antelope and Foothill Farms north. The P-Bids on Wallerga...
What if we just kept it by zip code, Doug?
Yeah, it would make sense for the, the P-Bid to stay together because that's an economic development thing.
I can assign by zip code.
Is, is 4295842 on the other side of the freeway?
I mean, 42 and 41 are, I mean, I, the community certainly identifies as Foothill Farms, both of those zip codes.
41 is what?
Foothill Farms.
And what is...
North Highlands is 95660.
I didn't see it on here. There it is over there. Okay. So, would you like me to assign 95660 to four?
It should already be in four, I think.
Can I just point out that if, looking at the deviations for three and four, they're both under, but by different margins. If you were to somehow in this area put more into three and take from four, you would help that situation.
Yeah, because three is under...
I mean, well, we could just take Roseville Road.
I was thinking, what if you just, yeah, did Roseville Road to...
All the way down there to Southville?
Yeah, just, yeah. So, if you take Roseville Road and what is that, Atwood Court or something? Or wherever that...
Yeah.
Palm Avenue, Palm Avenue.
If you just follow Roseville Road down and just make that into three...
Right, right.
Right, exactly.
It'll clean it up quite a bit.
This whole area right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That crosses Roseville Road, but that's okay, if you're okay with it.
Well, we might want to take it out, though, because this may make the deviation...
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's, it's making it a little bit, it'd be cleaner just to do it along Roseville Road, I think.
Yeah, yeah, let's try that.
And there's also a little tip at the bottom that...
Let's see what that looks like.
11,700 from four to three.
May just flip that deviation.
Watch this.
Oh, no.
You're at zero almost, Mr. Desmond.
Four is, right at five, almost.
Negative five.
5.02.
So now you're 8%, 8% deviation.
We made the deviation well.
801.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly okay if we reverse that, what we just did, put it back how it was. What do you think?
Well, before it was six and a half, now it's 801, 801, so you had a...
Let's keep going around the lines and...
You want, you want to undo what we just did?
Well, I, I think we can justify it either way. I mean, because it's certainly one, it's one zip code. It's part of the 95660 zip code. It's just a funky zip code configuration.
Yeah, again, if you, you know, you've still got growth in those, in the unders and...
I think Roseville Road seems like the more logical line.
But I think, to Don's point, I think even the deviation, even though the deviation grows a couple of points, but we're still within, we're still under 10, the fact that the deviation is now low or greatest on the low side for District Four, District Four is going to see most of the growth in the next 10 years, right?
You've certainly got Cordova Hills.
There are a lot of growth.
Alberta specific plan.
Yeah.
It'll be in D4, so I mean, so there's growth potential there, so...
I think this looks better, and I feel a little more comfortable that it wouldn't be challenged.
Yeah, it works better for the community.
Let's keep moving at the boundaries. Maybe we'll find some other cleanup, you know?
All right. Up to Antelope. That's Carmichael right there.
There's something, well, I guess it goes along the line. It's just, the line is crooked, right? There's one street that...
There's a piece of citrus heights right here. It's currently in three.
Yeah, let's put that back in four.
Yeah.
That might be the Foothill Golf Course. I don't know.
220 people.
No, I don't know what it, I can't see.
Holds a little bit.
It, it looks like there might be some, oh, no, go down on the corner. There, it looks like there might be a slip.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Some slivers that are in four that should be in three.
Right here?
I, I could be a little further over to the right, in the, there.
Right there?
Yeah, I mean, am I, I, I might be seeing it wrong.
No, it looks like you might be right.
There you go.
Aha, good eye.
And just, you know, we will, we'll run the computer through and it'll check, so any, any little slivers like that, the computer will catch.
Oh, okay. I guess we're all worried that it's not going to be perfect.
Census lines don't match the reality on the ground we hear.
Yeah, there's another one.
Another one right there.
Yeah.
Ooh.
Ooh, now we know why that's there.
Perhaps we need to leave that one alone.
Mm-hmm.
Going along Madison Avenue here. Fair Oaks Boulevard to Greenback. Greenback down Kenneth.
That's Fair Oaks, correct?
Yes, Kenneth to Madison.
That's an odd line.
Oh, there's, there's a corner.
Here's one. Orange Vale here, Fair Oaks here.
But can you go up just a little bit? Yeah.
Oh, there you go, yeah. Let's do this one first. Got Rollingwood? Oh, that's a big one.
That doesn't, that's, that's probably why.
Here's that Folsom line. I think this is where we started.
Yeah. Oh, what is... Is...
Is that the city limit?
Yeah, is that, is, can you move it up just a tiny bit? It seems like the, there's a hard line that is outside, can you move it up just a little bit?
Like that?
Yeah. Is that the city, the, the black line the city line, or is it the yellow line that's the city line?
The yellow line is your district line and the city line, yes.
Okay.
I've run into this before.
Yeah.
So, we've covered...
I think we're done with four cleanup. Who's next?
Can we go, I think if you just went on the, started at the northerly part of one, between one and three, four, and work south and come around that way counterclockwise, you'll catch the remaining boundaries.
Start in Alberta?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen this line already.
Yep, yep, yep.
There's McCollum.
Yep.
There's Hagan Oaks.
Oh, whoa, whoa, is that a city boundary, that little jog? See it?
Yeah, let's have a look.
Yeah, good eye.
Mm-hmm. One from three?
Yeah.
700 folks?
Mm-hmm. Is Roseville Road, is that, is that a, is that a block or something?
Roseville Row, oh, there you go.
Oh, there's some yellow, yeah.
Yeah.
See how far it goes?
Oh, wait.
Wait, there was...
Go, go back up along the southerly boundary of the, the, right, right there. Auburn Boulevard, see it?
So, that should go to three?
No, into one.
Oh, that one over there, okay.
It's a city boundary if you go to one.
Let's go to one on, on the other side of, what is that?
Yeah. And it should be Ethan Way all the way down.
Go south now?
Yeah, please. Yeah, please.
Is that something that we?
Yeah, that's something.
I don't, I don't think so.
I, I think.
Zoom back out, zoom, or zoom back in, I'm sorry.
Okay. Might be wrong.
That should be in 3 then, right?
Well, it seems like there's a.
That's city boundary right there.
Is the gold the city boundary or the purple?
The purple.
Purple line, yeah.
Yeah, why was the gold the, the city boundary?
Never mind, never mind.
Why was the gold the city boundary for, for, for my question over by Folsom then?
Hmm?
It's the overlaps.
It's the overlaps, the, the colors are overlapping.
Okay.
Proceed south, Mr. Cerner?
Yes, please. Right?
Some more weirdness looking right there, but I think it's probably.
That's the way it is right now.
Yeah. Campus Commons is now in 3, let's make sure, yeah, Campus Commons is in 3.
X State's in 1 now.
Howe Avenue is a boundary.
Mm-hmm.
16.
Jackson, I think.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, we can go back up there.
Is that a problem right there, or is the gold them?
Go, go, I would go east to check the boundary, no, 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 there you go. Go east and between the 3 and 5.
Right there?
Correct.
Yeah, that looks like a.
Yeah, nope.
Nope.
I'm not, not going to work.
Okay, Kiefer then. Folsom Boulevard. Crossing 50. To. That's Mayhew here.
Lurso Riviera, Larchmont East.
Uh-huh. I kind of switched away from 1, let's go.
No, 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 if you do it this way, it's, we'll pick up 1 where we left off. If, if you do this, then all we have to do is check the easterly and southerly boundary of 1 and 2 and the southerly boundary of 2 and 5, we'll be done. Yeah, falls the river.
We're going around 5.
Sunrise, yeah.
Sunrise. Okay, there's something here.
Something was wrong. You've really been a great help, Doug.
Thank Mr. Johnson as well, he's, he's helping me out here.
And, and Mr. Johnson.
Continue to go east.
Go east and then.
And then go north.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
He already did that, yeah, there, the 3, 4 border you've already gone over.
Okay.
Did you do that?
Did you go up Grant Line?
Not Grant Line, I don't think so.
All right, let's go up Grant Line. Oh, there's something right there. See what it's in.
One cow.
There's a cow.
Won't be for long.
Cordova Hills?
No, it's Anatolia or Cavala Ranch, one of them.
Prairie City Road here between 3 and 4. And then we've reached this Folsom boundary.
So if you go back down to, to Highway 16 and Power Inn roughly.
Go south from here?
That's all fine because we didn't, we didn't mess with that.
Yeah, that's all, the little jogs on one side of the city.
Just get the map up a little bit, please.
What's that you mean?
No, 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 just move the map up a little bit, there, there you go, there you go. That, those boundaries have not been messed with.
That's correct.
Okay. So just keep following it west, please. Can you zoom in to the bottom of the, the finger that's in District 1 there? Follow Fruit Ridge, please.
Elder Creek.
Further to the west.
Right, this corner here?
No, no, further to the west.
Right of 99, there we go.
There's, is it, what, what's that gray? Is that just the?
Oh, this here?
Oh. I guess so, I don't know what that is.
I think it's the borderline, it's that color that's inside the city.
Okay.
This is unincorporated and that's the city.
I get that, and see where it says 2.37%, right underneath that, just that line there, is that, that's, that's the way it's supposed to be, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's all, that's, so if you just keep on going west now, okay, and then fall.
North.
Then we go north on the train tracks. And then we go west on Sutterville.
Sutterville.
We go north on Freeport.
Freeport.
And left on Balaio, Balaio all the way to the river. What's the, that's, okay, so that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, this, this here?
Yeah, a sliver.
Okay, we're at the river?
Yep, and then I think that's it for 1.
Yeah, I think so too.
Now you just need to check 2 and 5.
Follow the river on down.
There's Freeport.
Oh, what's that?
Something's wrong there or something, or.
There's a little sliver or something.
This is the current line.
Oh, really?
I think it's just offset, that's why.
Okay.
I think the only adjustment you did, if I'm not mistaken, is the correction on the Elk Grove block, right?
What's that, what's that, Doug, what is that?
This, this area here?
Yeah. That's current line, the red?
Um, the, the brown line is the city line. And then this would be, let's see.
Oh, Grove.
This is the. The land, there's, is this where the?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
The, the treatment plant.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking where the, where the blue comes across the red line, what is?
You want me to put this area in 5?
Yeah, wherever it was.
See if it does it.
Cleans it up.
Yes or no on that one?
There you go.
Hi, Derek.
Yes.
All right.
That's just a function of the weird city boundary.
This is a city boundary here.
That is a weird boundary.
Down here. This is just offset, as you say. Sheldon Road. Up to Geneva Point. Calvine between Elk Grove and the county.
Keep going.
To the left. Here's 99. Okay.
Yeah, you get that piece of Archie property.
We've, we've reached Excelsior and Calvine. There's a golf course here. To Gerber. Elk Grove Florin. Which becomes South Watt. And we've reached the number, the border with 1 again.
Can you just, just go west, please? I want to make sure that when you did the Gerber flip, you got every, it looks like we got every parcel or every block. Yep. I think that's it.
Good. All right, where to next?
I think that's it, right?
I think it's number 5.
No, I think we.
We've covered 5's border between 2 and 4. And the, the rest of it is the county line.
Yeah, Doug, if you could just go back to the Murrieta, make sure we got that lined up right there. We made the, made the adjustment, but let's see where, Indio Drive and. Okay. Stop right there. What's, what's that gray line where the Highway 16, furthest one to the left is, there's a line that comes down, gray.
This one here?
Yeah, right there, what is that? That's currently in 5?
There's a creek here.
Yeah.
Might just be a block line.
Okay. If it's currently in 5, leave it in 5, I just.
Yeah, I can't identify it, this is a creek here. And then it just goes around like that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
What was, what do you think was the reason why they put that other section in 4 before, Don?
You're talking to, in the middle there?
Yeah.
Well, that's where the Mobile Home Park is, where the Equine Center is?
No, I mean, further down, in between Van Vleck and that area.
Oh, I don't know.
You think it's the sheriff?
That little box there, I don't know about that, I mean, if there's something in there, you can, you know, double check your maps.
I don't think it ma, it's, it doesn't matter, I didn't know if it was something.
As long as it didn't take in the, I know you want the service center and the operating engineers.
It's the Sheriff Service Center and.
That should be in D4.
Well, that's why they had it in there, maybe.
No, not there.
No, not there, it's, it's on the other side of that peninsula.
I'm just adjusting, it looked like there was a Murrieta line there, but let me, let me ask you. See this right here? There's 16 folks in there. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Could I give it to 4 or 5?
Stay in D5, okay, but further down, it was D4 before, the only thing I can think of that's there is the sheriff substation and a.
Yeah, I would say you want to keep that in.
That, that goes with the community, it works with the community.
It was that box before that you took out, that we were lying up by Van Vleck Road, but I, I think that was a little further to the. You might want to just check, I mean, Phil has a Google up too, see how that would line up. Again, you don't want to put the service center in D4, you want to leave that in, I mean, D5, leave it in D4.
Well, they, they work with.
Yeah, no, I agree, I, I'm in complete agreement, and the operating engineer, engineers is on that south side there, so there may have been a reason why that line.
Airport in D5?
Is there airport?
Yeah, there's a, it's a small, oh, not, not that big, it was a smaller section.
Airport should be in.
In 5 or 4?
The census bureau redrew the block.
Is it in though?
Small area is no longer a census block now.
Oh, they.
The whole area is one single block.
Just leave it in D5, that's fine.
All right.
I think Don wants to keep Van Vleck, right?
Yeah, but, but does it take the service center out, because I think that's important.
They redrew the, it's bigger now, so it.
It is in?
Yeah, that, that's just one block, we can't subdivide it, so either.
It doesn't matter, we can still work with them even if they're not with us.
As long as you're fine with that, okay.
But that's right, that little triangle he was highlighting earlier is part of Rancho Marietta.
It is? Okay. Okay, that's fine, and the airport's in, I mean, Phil was asking, the airport is in, right? In D4? I can't, I, I don't know where that, where it is.
It should be.
Kind of at the bottom of that bowl.
In that section.
Do you scroll the map up a little bit? Guarantee you. Other way.
Like that?
Yeah, it's on the south side of 16. To the west a little bit.
I don't think we have airports.
It's a really small airport, I, I'm pretty sure it's probably in that.
Yeah, it's.
What do you think, Don?
Yeah, I think it's, it hugs it.
It's on the north side of the river, yeah.
So you're going to move that, the pink into D4, because that's part of Murrieta, you said? Okay. Shall I assign these two blocks to a District 4, the one in the red I've highlighted? Right.
Yeah, because it's Rancho Marietta and there's only 16 people there.
Okay. As long as it's Rancho Marietta, that's the address. Okay. Can you run that out to the county line? Amador. Okay. Please. Yep, there's the Amador, Amador County right there.
Edge of the universe.
Oh, that's the county line, okay, good.
Could I ask, could I look at one thing real quick? You know, mine, so go back to the La Riviera area, I know we, we added some additional population to D3 over there. Just that area, I think it's actually part of Rosemont's in a different school district, I don't know, Don, that one little corner south of 50, east of Watt.
Right, the Cal, the, the Cal Center.
Yeah, and that's not currently in D3.
It's not.
Could we look and maybe see about take, keep, just keeping that in D4?
I'm fine, it's 1885 folks and you can bring it back, as long as it's, throw a deviation out, I was, you know, we were trying to.
Yeah, we were trying to add population, yeah.
So it's.
There's Bradshaw, so Watt has to be.
Keep coming, you're right, almost there, Doug, yeah, right.
Watt here.
Uh, yeah, right, yeah, right there, yeah, that triangle. Put it back in. What, what would you like me to do?
From 3 to 5?
Back to, back to 5. This area here? No, come up, right, right where 50 is there, yeah, and then, yeah, there you got it, that triangle. This here? Cal Center, okay.
Yeah, it, it will.
But it's 1885, it's not very many.
It's not my, it's a different school district and it's, you know, I mean, it's currently in D5 now.
Yeah, put that back in. Between Watt 50 and.
Yes.
Folsom. There, okay. It'll change it by 1885 folks, I think. Yep, by 1885.
It'll take your deviation above 3, probably.
Yeah, a little bit. Still won't take us out altogether. Think I got it, 1800? 1885. From D3 to D5. 3 to 5.
Yeah.
You know, throw us up a little bit. We're still, still within the margin, 7.
We're essentially 9%.
Yeah, okay.
And 3 and 4 are still in more of the growth areas than under this map. And three and four are still in more of the growth areas than under this map.
Eight point five.
Okay, eight point five.
What about, um, no, if, could you go back to what the view you just had there?
Where we were?
Yeah, please. What do you, what do you call this, the, what the east?
Butterfield Riviera.
What if that went into three?
No, they identify with...
No, that's right.
That's the area between, yeah, yeah, it's Butterfield River. I mean, the wedge that we had in there, yeah, is, you know, part of Rosemont, but it's separated by Folsom Boulevard and it's, you know, that's why it suggested if we were trying to, but other than that, we keep communities together. So three needs to pick up some, is what you're saying? I don't know if there's any more of the...
What'd you say? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Five, five needs to give up if anything, if they can.
To who?
Ideally to four, but it doesn't matter, really. Anything coming out of, five is our largest district, so as long as the territory goes into any other district, it won't make for deviations.
I don't know how you feel about part of anything close to Rancho Marietta, or do you want to keep it all? I'm not...
You're not getting your population.
There's nothing down.
There's nothing else for him to get.
You get them in dozens, not in tons or dozens, so that's why I looked at that triangle. I mean...
What if you look at the area where five, four, and three are?
Going back, what?
I'm thinking the Equestrian.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, you filled all that in, you got all Aerojet, east in Glenboro now, you got a logical boundary along White Rock, District 4 has.
Did you take part of that, Rich?
Yeah, I did.
Where?
Yeah, you, you took that from four, right? Or was that from you?
Yes, it was from four. But I was, I was wondering, if you would go further east, is there any opportunity to peel off some more from five into either three or four?
I'm just saying the Equestrian Center, where...
Put, put your hand out, your grab hand on.
Murrieta and the Equestrian Center, they're all kind of part of Rancho Marietta, or do you want to keep that? It's okay if you do.
Grab hand, Doug.
Grab hand.
You've got all that. Equestrian Center's with you.
I don't have, I don't think I have the Equestrian, I, or...
Go back to, if you want to go to Murrieta, I mean, yeah, you got the Equestrian Center, it's all, it's all in there, it was in that yellow.
I thought that was in you.
No, no. Should be in yours, right there, it's...
It's all D4, Equestrian Center right there, Mobile Home Park, Airport, all in D4.
Okay, well, I don't know what else you could give to D4. He's, do we have to give to D4?
No, it's, you're, you're at eight and a half percent, so as long as we can justify all the lines, then, yeah. It, it's a level that makes us nervous, but it's, it's in that, in the 10% window and you're, you're not going to get tripped up by census data or anything.
Is there a way to print that on one page and give us a copy of it so we can see the lines, all, all in one map, or?
You mean, print from here?
Put it on a thumb drive and grit and give it to...
Or can you email it to Flo and she can print it and give us a copy of the map so we can see it, because it's hard to see what, where we're at?
It's actually easier, you know, the interactive map we've been using where you can click which, which layer you want to do, it's an online site. We can put it there in five or 10 minutes, and then you can zoom in and scroll around rather than trying to see it.
I don't, I don't know. Do you guys need, I, I don't, we don't have to, it's just I'm having trouble seeing the forest for the trees.
Let me take the zip codes off.
Look at every blade of grass.
Okay, if, well, he said it's danger zone, like we need to make some adjustments, so I was going to look at, where can we do that?
He didn't say danger zone, I think he said nervous.
Oh, nervous isn't danger?
Keeps us on our toes.
Okay.
Danger zone was Top Gun.
If we're happy, okay, if you guys want to live on the wild side, I can do it, trust me. I can roll with the best of them.
I focused on Bradshaw and Folsom Boulevard. This area here, should that be in five? You want to keep that in five right here?
Butterfield Riviera. Yes. And then you have Lincoln Village, which is in the city to the south of 50. Those are all communities, and that's where the Bradshaw Theaters are, or, yeah, they're still there. Part of that community.
Folsom Cordova School District, right?
And we, you know, we heard from the neighborhood, we had a workshop out there.
So leave that as is?
I say yes.
Okay.
I think Don sounds happy with his district.
Yeah, I, again, I think, you know, if you want to look at communities, I think you've done an excellent job, certainly Doug with the cursor and listening to us, both in the north and south, you know, the community. I know obviously there's, you know, I certainly don't want to discount testimony about community interest, but when I think about at least community frameworks, geography, and folks identifying and so forth, I think you've done a good job. I mean, obviously it's not perfect in the eyes of some, but...
I agree, I agree.
And just to put all the comments in the same place, and to the point that you made earlier, the district that's really short is four, which is almost certainly the fastest growing one.
It will be very...
Kind of anticlimactic.
Now what do we do?
So what do we, take a timeout for a few minutes and get a map, is what we're going to do? Do we need a map?
Would you like to at least walk away with the map?
Natasha's going to tell us what we're going to do.
Perfect.
All right, Natasha.
Well, first I want to say thank you so much. I know we're not done, but I have to say...
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you and the teleprompters and the, everyone who has been working on this. It's made it so much easier for all of us, and the interpreters who came and made sure everybody could understand it.
And we have one caller that is on hold too, if you want to take that.
Oh, thank you. Would, would you like us to take the public comment while you're getting the map situated? Maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, we're trying to figure something out right now.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take the public comment.
I'm going to, I'm going to turn your mics off too over there, Natasha.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, good afternoon supervisors. Michelle Wright, Stack County resident. I'm calling in in regards to the dividing line between District 3 and District 4 for the Orangevale and Fair Oaks purposes. I know it was your intent to keep Orangevale hole and Fair Oaks hole, so just wanted to call out, north of Madison, between Pershing and Madison is actually Fair Oaks. Currently you have it within District 4. Basically everything north of Madison Avenue is put into District 4, whereas that Pershing Avenue should be the dividing line between Orangevale and Fair Oaks, as it currently is. So yeah, that's like around Madison and Hazel there. So just want to let you know about that. Hopefully you can adjust that one. Thank you.
I, I had a little bit of trouble hearing you. Do you mind just, are you still there, ma'am? She, she hung up. No, well, did you, did anyone, did others hear her?
Pershing?
She was saying that the notch that's north of Madison should be with District 4, is that what she said? I think that's what she was...
I wasn't clear what she said either, so I'm trying to find Madison here.
I thought she was trying to say that there's a little portion that's actually Fair Oaks and needs to be put in District, I thought that's what she said, but we can check.
Can you call her back?
It's probably a simple...
I feel bad. I'm, I struggle to hear sometimes, and I struggle to understand with that mic.
I know, and I'm sorry.
It's not your fault, but...
I have, sometimes I, well, my hearing is just not that good, but they're calling her right now. I mean, they're trying to get her on the line. And the food is being brought down as we speak. They're just separating everything out, so...
I think she's talking about that notch that crosses Madison. It's kind of a weird line. We cleaned it up by putting it back in Fair Oaks, but I can't, I don't know if she's saying it should be in District 3 or 4.
Well, we cleaned up that Orangevale area, for sure.
We cleaned up Orangevale and we also cleaned up, we cleaned up some of Fair Oaks. She's saying, my staff are saying she said between Madison and Pershing should be Fair Oaks. I'm, I'm not sure that's correct, he says, so...
I don't know where Pershing is. I'm at the, I'm at Fair Oaks Boulevard in Madison here.
It would be, it would be Kenneth and Madison, Kenneth and Madison, I think.
Okay. Here's Kenneth and Madison. Pershing is right there. I'm not on screen, I'm sorry.
Maybe she's saying we didn't get the, cover all of it.
They're transferring her in right now.
There we go.
Hi ma'am, you're in the meeting now?
Hi.
Hi, can you just mute the meeting in the background and that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so what I was trying to say is between Pershing Avenue and Madison Avenue, currently you have that within District 4, and I guess under the consideration that that was Orangevale. However, that area north of Madison, south of Pershing, around Hazel, is actually Fair Oaks, so I'm hoping you can move that District 3, District 4 dividing line north at the actual line that is what separates Orangeville and Fair Oaks. Is that clear?
Can you...
Does it go to Beach or to Hazel?
Um, let me pull up my map.
Or Illinois, Illinois, Hazel?
Yeah, so it is, it's between like Hazel and Kenneth around.
Okay, so it goes all the way to Hazel. All the way over there. South of Pershing. Again, there's a disagreement with the...
Are you saying that those addresses are 95628 Fair Oaks?
Correct, yeah.
The Census Bureau calls that Orangevale. So it's up to you.
But, but it's in a Fair Oaks zip code?
Uh, let me bring the zip codes back up, see if it comes here.
Flo, can you give us, give us the map that he's working on?
There we go.
Where, can you point to where she's talking about?
Yeah, right here. Right here. Pershing is that little line. This is Hazel, and this is Kenneth. And Madison.
Well, I think if it's a Fair Oaks zip code, we should probably put it in D3. If it is.
I just don't know where the Fair Oaks zip code, can you do a search by Fair Oaks zip code and see where those are? I always thought of that as Orangeville, but 95662, she's saying it's 95628.
There's a zip code line right there, that blue line.
We visited this issue. We visited this issue.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's why, that's why we moved it.
So if you look at Turnbull Circle, for example,
Yep.
that's, that's a 95628. And that's currently in the yellow, which is D4.
Correct.
And it used to be, it used to be in D3. Is that correct? We just moved it into D4 today. That's what we just moved.
Well, if we move that back, it helps us...
Yeah, we can move that back. Thank you for letting us know. I think we, I think it was in D3 before and we moved it into D4 today.
Now here's the map.
Yeah, I believe you did too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll fix it, we'll reverse it.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why it was not making sense to us. Their zip code is different.
Should help on deviation.
Yeah.
Um, Doug, are, are you guys ready for me to display the map? Are you still working on it? Okay.
We have one more correction going on and then we'll have it.
From... Four to three.
Does it continue to the east?
Can you move that box? Because it looks like it's continuing.
Get your hand and move the, move the map over.
No, or move the thing over.
Now you made it worse.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
No, but there's another spot over there that doesn't make sense.
I think that little, that little blue finger may all, may also be Fair Oaks too, right, Phil? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see if that's Fair Oaks.
That's what it looks like on the, on the zip code map too.
Yep, that's why it was like that. Glad we found out. I don't know if this makes a difference with Courtney Bailey and the registrar voters for census. Well, she's going to clean up census tracts, right?
Right.
So... But it was this way before, so I don't think it's going to be a problem.
That one's too big.
Nope. All right.
So I'll go ahead and implement this.
Yep. So it hurts us on the deviation.
What's our total deviation now? What's that?
We're over nine.
How did, how did it hurt us? I thought...
We just took all those people out of, out of four.
Oh, four was lowest, right?
Oh. Yeah, that, that does, that's a weird line. It, it, one side of the street is going to be in District 3 and the other side's going to be in District 4.
Happens everywhere.
You know...
Just because I have some past experiences as supervisor Frost with people wanting zip code changes.
Keep in mind your zip codes are, are drawn based on how big the building is and how many trucks they can fit at the post office. They're, they're not, they don't use zip codes to define communities, even though normally people do, but the lines are not drawn that way.
I suggest we go back.
I think it seems like Orangeville personally, but I don't know if Rich cares.
He always finds me. Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine, either way.
I think we should revert back.
Undo.
Well, it's getting, we're making it worse than it, with the numbers, that's the problem.
So I'll undo that?
Yes. All right. Hopefully the...
Hopefully the constituent won't mind.
Well, yeah, hopefully she'll hear the explanation about zip codes being somewhat, somewhat irrelevant.
Although she might.
Are we done?
I think we are. I mean, I just want to ask one more time. Do you think we should have left that in Fair Oaks or Orangeville? Do you? What do you think?
I'm fine with this. I think it's not. It's not board messing up.
Deviation, yeah.
Okay. Okay, subject to cleanup by registrar voters and census track and city and everything, right?
Do you want me to maybe suggest what our next steps might be?
Please.
Okay.
Please.
So we will, as you just suggested Supervisor Frost, we'll clean up the draft and we'll add it to the online interactive map so that the public can see that. And we'll do that by Friday of this week. We'll also take that draft and finalize it working with Courtney's team and NDC. And we'll publish a final map no later than November 30th because it has to be published seven days before December 7. And then we'll, of course, also draft a resolution to bring back to you with the legal definition for these boundaries on December 7 as well. And we'll work with County Council as well as Courtney. Go ahead.
Just curious, are we doing meets and bounds descriptions or how are we? I'm seeing a lot of questions on the County Council forum about that, how people are doing that, which is why I'm raising that question.
Yes. Historically, we used to have to do. We have to get an engineer involved for meets and bounds. Now the GIS is so good that that is not needed to implement. Some folks still do it out of tradition, but it really comes down to as long as we have enough that the registrars can feel confident when they implement where the lines are. So we can work with Courtney's team and figure out what they want specifically. But those are thankfully going the way and moving more towards what an average person can understand if here's the map.
Thank you.
And just for the meets and bounds that you're referring to would be like township and section lines and seconds and those kinds of things.
I think that's what we have in the county code now.
Yeah.
It's not helpful.
It also references natural and manmade. What do you call them? Landmarks.
If you're supportive of those next steps, that's what we'll do.
We are, and we do have a question from Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I know we've had a number of folks watching this and I would maybe helpful if you could go through the numbers that are kind of on top there. You know, you've made it so we a little better for us to read, but if you could talk about what the population numbers and what the deviations are so we know with what we've now going to stand forward for the next step, where we ended up District by District and where the deviations place.
Okay.
And what is this being called? The preferred map? Is this being called? What are you calling this map?
This is the final map. The final draft. Final draft.
Final draft, okay.
District 1 has 324,487 people. That's a deviation of 7,510.
The ideal number? Why don't we state that again?
Sorry?
The ideal number is what?
316.
317.
316 and change.
Oh, is it 314 or 316? Here it is. 316, 977.
Okay, so 316,976 is the spot on number. Okay, thanks.
Right. And District 1 is 324,487. A deviation of 7,510. That's 2.37%. District 2 is at 316,279, which is only 698 under the ideal population. That's 0.22%. District 3 is at 314,541, under by 2,436, 0.77% deviation. District 4 is at 301,256, which is 15,721 under the ideal population. 4 point. Under by 4.96%. District 5 is 328,323, which is over by 11,346. A deviation of 3.58%.
Okay, thank you.
And then our total deviation, high to low?
What was the question?
He was asking what is the total deviation?
So yeah, it's high to low would be 4.96 to 3.58, which is, what is that? 8.54.
8.54.
One thing, just so there aren't any surprises, as we clean it up, there may be a block here, a block there that is misassigned or, you know, that's not contiguous with this district. So those numbers may change by, you know, 5, 10, something like that. So if people see the numbers change, that's where it'll be and we'll record those.
Okay, well, I want to. I want to thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Yocum and your staff. And Natasha, you have been amazing through all this, through the interview process and all of the. All of our team from the county really helped a lot. And I don't know how we got to this fast. I didn't plan on going home for dinner tonight, so. I'm really happy. And I want to thank you so much for getting us this far. We're looking forward to working our way to that final map. I guess this is a final map, but I'm looking forward to seeing it.
You're certainly welcome, and I thank you, members of the board, for working with us on this. I'd also like to thank your staff again for assisting us and making it all look good and an easy way to do this. If I had done this in the legislature 10 years ago, you know, I don't know what would have happened.
And thank you for bringing that interactive map. That really helped us pull it together. I don't think we could have done it as well without it. So thank you for thinking of that Supervisor Natoli because I think that really helped. Supervisor Serna?
Yes, thank you. For those that may still be watching or care, we did receive a number of comments last night. And many speakers cited the fact that they thought this process was being rushed, was too compressed a timeline. And could you perhaps just put on the record again why it is that it does feel that way even for us and it's a little out of the norm?
Certainly. It's a speech we're giving a lot these days because this is obviously not of the county's choosing. So the idea was we would get census data in March and we would have until December 15th to finish this process. Because of COVID and everything happened with that, the census data actually came out in mid-August. And California, in a decision made years ago, made a widely supported decision to shift the prison population, to count them with their last known home addresses. It was hoped that would take two to four weeks. That ended up taking seven weeks. So we had hoped to have the data in March or April and then have eight or nine months to finish this process. Instead, we received the data at the end of September. And because the end date is tied to the election, it's not moving. And the legislature actually considered moving the election and all of that, but they ultimately decided not to. So our start date went from March to early October and our end date stayed December 15th. So and of course, as you now have to go through, there's the, you know, the formal introduction of the formal paperwork and all that that still has to happen, which is why we're. We have to have this wrapped up now. So yes, instead of nine months, we have two and a half.
Great. I think that helps, or at least it should in terms of the concerns that I think we all had, not just the people that decided to address us. Having gone through this once before and Dawn, this is what, your fifth time? It is.
The last.
It usually is a more extended and iterative process. And again, thank you for saying it wasn't of the county's choosing because that's absolutely correct. Thanks.
I also want to say that it's not an easy process for us as a board because it's very personal. Your district is very personal in talking about swapping, you know, losing parts of it or gaining other parts. It's hard, I think, for all of us. And I want to thank the board for working so well together to, you know, I think we did a really good job helping each other come up with a good map. I'm excited about it. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, I would just add to the thanks. Certainly thank Doug and Doug for their efforts, Natasha and Courtney and all the folks that have worked in the clerk's office for all the technical assistance here. And I want to again thank the public who participated at various junctures, at various levels, including obviously up until just a few minutes ago with the caller. And the effort to do the outreach in that compressed amount of time certainly challenged, you know, folks to find locations, to have the technical setup, to have the ability to Zoom call in and such. But I think all in all, it was, you know, a process that was open. And certainly the work we did here in these chambers over the last two days was, you know, open and again, we had the public comment. And I'm sure there's folks who were satisfied, those are a bit disappointed. But nonetheless, I think again, with the technical assistance and working with the framework that we had, I think that, you know, we ended up in a place that hopefully reflects not only what the law requires, but a real effort to try to, you know, preserve communities of interest, to keep them together, recognizing the challenge of population and some of the the geography that, you know, is the framework for obviously where communities live and so forth. But with a million and a half people in this county, I think folks can, you know, hopefully over the next 10 years, see that what was anticipated relative to growth in some areas, but also reflecting mature communities and cities and communities of interest and all the various district boundaries and so forth. Again, I want to just compliment all the folks that have participated because they contributed in ways that helped us as board members deliberate and certainly to, I think, reflect on not only the seriousness of the task, but the gravity that comes with setting these boundaries and obviously what it means for people of this county. So I want to just thank everybody involved and again, thank you, Madam Chair, for your efforts in leading us through it.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. I also want to add that there were so many different criteria that we had to meet. It was not a matter, just a matter of geographic population, you know, ethnic, I guess, political persuasion, ethnicity, you know, there were so many federal and state laws that were in play. And then at the very end, when we were having those conversations about smoothing out the lines or, you know, doing something that makes sense to a neighborhood, even though the zip code is different, it's not because we don't care or, you know, it's really, it was a matter of, you know, we were, you know, we had to meet certain criteria to actually make this map approvable at the end. And so I don't know if I said that well, but I think what I'm trying to say is, especially to the last caller who came, called in with her zip code, which was Fair Oaks. My district ended up being the smallest district with the most potential for growth. But, you know, I was quite a bit, something like 15,000 below other districts. And so we were trying to hold on to what I had, I think, and make sure that map would be approved. So anyway, again, we want to thank the public for being a positive part of it and thank all the professionals that were, that made this happen. And we're excited and looking forward to moving, moving toward December. Is it December 7, the final? So we'll see you. I think we'll see you a couple, maybe one or two more times. Okay. Thank you so much. All right. I think with that, we can move on to our closing items.
Madam Chair, someone called in on the county execs line because the redistricting. I closed the public comment after the last comment, so they just called in to the county execs line, which I just closed. They want to make a public comment on the map, so.
Oh, sure.
Do you mind taking that one call?
Yes.
And then off agenda, may I close the off agenda public comments? I've left it open the entire time.
Oh, boy. We were out of. We stayed up till 11 o'clock last night. That must have been our first problem. Yes, would you please? Thank you for catching that.
Thank you. And please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Wendy Daniels. Thank you for taking my comment. I live in the Parkway Center area in South Sacramento. My comment has to do with the maps for redistricting. I am opposed to the 203 districting map, but I do support the 202 and the 201. It's vital to keep our district in whole for our voting purposes. Thank you for your attention and you gentlemen and ladies have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for your input.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Good evening.
And that actually does conclude all of your public comments.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the next item, please.
And just so you guys know, staff said that the timing was impeccable. She hadn't even watched the meeting. She was just calling in, so.
That was.
Kudos to her. County executive comments?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to do a little piling on of the thank yous. I want to thank NDC for doing such a great job, but I also want to thank Natasha and Kim Nava, who helped with outreach materials and Courtney, of course, and then their teams that supported them as well. And then I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Thank you for helping us get through it. Thank you all. We really appreciate it. And Supervisor Serna had a comment?
Yeah, so I assume we're on to Supervisor comments. I just wanted to say a few words and acknowledge the fact that I had a good fortune as well as our county CEO, Wayne Edwards, to be a part of a historic Zoom meeting last week. It was the inaugural meeting of the Sacramento County Commission on women and girls, on the status of women and girls. And we had about 100 people in attendance, including the commissioners, your commissioners. And it was really a proud moment for all of us. And it was probably since the advent of COVID and Zoom, for me at least, it was the most heartfelt and positive remote meeting that I've had, again, the good fortune to be part of. And I can tell you that all the participants and those that contributed to the establishment of the commission and as it relates to the Blue Ribbon Commission prior to that, are very excited about the work ahead. And we should all feel proud and very good about the fact that this county now has a dedicated advisory body that will help guide us in future decision making when it comes to resource allocation, policymaking, as it affects the status of women and girls here in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. I was there and I think several others were there. And it was really fun to see you acknowledged for championing that effort of the Blue Ribbon Committee. And they're really excited, so we're all excited. Do not have any other supervisors in the queue to speak? And I believe we have no further business for the evening. So this meeting is adjourned.
So there's food in the kitchen?